About this joint meeting, asking for order at 5:05 PM. You notice that it has been posted, the joint meeting is now open for the regional district. We should know if the meeting law, many questions are, may make an audio or video recording as public reading, meeting or may transmit this meeting to any meeting committee is a therefore advised that reporting or transmission of any meeting whether perceived or unperceived by the president. I wrote all the members, Jennifer Andrews.
President.
Emily Ferrera.
President.
Julia McAdity.
President.
Lucy Moshada.
President.
Kelly O'Brien.
President.
Are you men some of the--
The call to all of the meeting members, public school meetings, 5:05 PM, students will obey the meeting law and are permitted to make audio recordings of the meeting recording, public school meetings, public meetings, 5:45 PM, that such a recording will finish, course question, may be made with a procedure on the seat by the president. There are all the members present, Mr. Goff.
Present.
Ms. Corbbo.
Present.
Ms. Ferrera.
Ms. Moshada.
And the chair is also present, because tonight we have Jeff, Jeff's roles, he's been kind of at school, and Laura Tarr, left in this, right now, and our reporter, Kelly O'Brien, Carter. Something you can--
Okay, first up, we have a presentation in consideration for Fair Share Amendment, Mr. Texera and Jim Pimental joining us here.
Where would you like us?
Yeah, you got, I don't know if you had the speaking, we have the other materials with you.
I'm gonna--
Step right in, sir.
Stand up there or--
Yeah, that's fine. Long as everyone can hear you.
So I had sent some information to Mrs. McCarr, or to send to all the committee members prior to the meeting. So yeah, my name is Jim Pimental, I work for the Bricklayers Union, here with Mr. Texera. I wear a lot of other hats, I chair the Democratic Town Committee here in Somerset. I sit on the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Texera is a Senate District Rep of the Mass Teachers Association, sits on the town's advisory finance committee, a couple of other committees, I understand, the municipal building committee, so we're pretty active in the town, but I did want to talk to you about the Fair Share Amendment. The amendment is an amendment to the state constitution that will appear in the form of a ballot question on November 8th. It would change our state income tax from a flat 5% tax on all personal income to one on which everyone would still pay 5% on the first million and an additional 4% on any personal income earned over a million. So for instance, you make a million and $100, you pay 5% on that first million, you pay 9% on the additional 100, and then you come around over after that. The additional 4% would apply only to personal income earned, not assets, not business income, nothing else. The additional revenue raised, which is estimated to be upwards of $2 billion annually, could only be spent on public education, transportation, and infrastructure. Consider what that extra annual income could be for the two school systems. As you know, the state passed the Student Opportunity Act, which was historic legislation that updated the old school funding formula. The new law includes a plan to fund K for 12 over seven years, but it doesn't specify a source of revenue from which to pay for it. The Fair Share Amendment would go a long way in helping to fulfill that promise. Besides the need in investments in our state's economy, that to change what it would provide, it also makes the state income tax a little fairer. For years, the highest-income households in Massachusetts have paid a smaller share in state and local taxes than any other income group. They've also repeatedly benefited from federal tax cuts. A handful of billionaires with a bid in Massachusetts saw their wealth increase by a total of $172 billion during the first seven months of the pandemic alone. There is strong public approval for this amendment. Poll after poll has shown that Massachusetts voters supported its passage by a 4 to 1 margin. More than 150,000 Massachusetts voters signed the ballot petition initially, and the amendment passed two constitutional conventions with the overwhelming support of legislators, including Representative Hadad and Senator Rogers, the last time in 2021 by a vote of 159 to 41. The Fair Share Amendment is a way to make long-term and sustainable investments and to contribute to economic growth. While over 99% of us won't pay a penny more, we will all benefit from improvements in public education, transportation, and infrastructure. I hope you will join us in supporting the Fair Share Amendment.
Any members have questions?
Any members have any questions?
I'd like to say just a couple of things, okay, just to add on to what Jim said. This 4% tax on over a million dollars would only affect people who make more than $20,000 a year, a week. It would only affect less than 1% of Massachusetts residents who already don't pay as a percentage of their income what the average person pays, okay? It's passed in at least 10 other states. They have had no mass migration of billionaires from there because, and where we are even in that position, is this is for education and infrastructure, roads, bridges, buses, trains, airports, a billion dollars associated to school buildings. And building for education, then they must specifically go to that, they can't do anything else. The legislator can say where it goes in education, where it goes in infrastructure, but we can still lobby that as citizens every year. So honestly, this is already passed, school committees and selectmen, as well as city councils and other communities. Unanimous as a resolution that you support. I don't have to tell you, as I told Jeff soon over here, that two or three years ago, when the Student Opportunity Act just started out, everybody laughed about it, oh, another tax, and this and that. Well, guess what? Somerset gets around $3 million extra from that, you know, over the course of time. So 50 to 100 years ago, the state, which is in our state constitution, used to provide that, you know, the state is responsible for education and this, and it paid about 18% of education costs back then. Today, it's almost, or around 50%, and it should increase even more, which is rightfully so, because the two biggest driving points of any economy are education and infrastructure for economy, okay, for business and for education. So we're looking for your support, and we're not stopping here, of course. It's already passed at the Board of City Council. Jim has invited me to go with him to the Board of School Committee this month, and we're going to continue to work. And I represent the Mass Teachers Association for Whistle and Quin, First Whistle and Quin Columbus. So I'll be going to Freetown, Westport, Lakeville, Swansea, et cetera, Rochester, not far there, but when I look at you people, I'm looking at all friends, and you know that I teach a bit for middle teenagers, and we're looking for that support, and I hope you'll join us, okay, for the sake of our kids and our educators and by citizens, okay, and by culture.
All right. Well--
Thanks.
Thank you. And Chair, Mr. Chair, this is something that I'm going to support. Mr. Pimental actually reached out to me a few, about a month ago, actually, or something like that.
During the Crispy and signing.
Exactly. So it's something that I was, you know, I was prepared to act on it when he had mentioned. It is true, it is affecting the families or the individuals who made $20,000 or more a week, which unfortunately, I'm not that bracket yet, but I wouldn't mind paying the extra 4% if I was in that bracket, I can, you can mark my words on that. But the thing that, the only one thing that does concern me about this, and I am going to get the support, I love how the very first penny of every sales dollar goes to the building authority. This is one of those things where I have to now work and lobby, like you mentioned, to the represent, you know, we need to spend money on the trains, the, and many times, legislation tends to have control of where the money goes and things like that, and I'm also concerned that this potential $2 billion extra a year is going to not be an addition to our Chapter 70 monies, it may be a way that they're funding that Chapter 70 money. So that would be the only thing that I'm really concerned, but I think first step is to get this passed, and then second step is to really look at where the number, the money is coming and figure out, okay, where is it fair? Is it the major cities that are getting all the money? You know, one of the things about the lottery tickets, I believe, a percentage of what's sold in the town go back to the town, so that's what I'm kind of wondering. So that would be, that would be my only concern, so when you are lobbying later on, just think of things like that, but that's the only concern that I believe in.
That is probably, at least for the Mass Teachers Association, the uppermost thing in our minds. And as I told you, one billion will have to go to education for two billion. The legislature can't decide where it goes, but this legislation is separate and apart from the Student Opportunity Act, okay? And the thing about this is that it's like anything else, you go, you know, the wheel of the sweet saladas gets the oil. And I can tell you that as far as I'm concerned, the Massachusetts Teachers Association has over 110,000 members, it's the largest union in the state of Massachusetts, again again, it's the largest union and a part of a big company, and I can tell you that we don't stop. And, you know, many of you have been involved in meetings, even on Zoom, that made at different times, you know, at least once every 12 months, and I can tell you, your concerns are rock and stone, and we will be here to protect your concerns.
And I think there's something to be said for the clock that Representative Hadad, all her years of leadership up there, how she was able to secure the ready funds for exam, over and over again, and not to mention Senator Michael Rogers, in the position he's in now, as Raising Means Chair, which he probably, if anything, he's probably going to go up in that body, so. So we've got some friends out there in the right places.
Just say, I've had a, you know, I had a chance to talk to Jim about this, and, you know, he sent, sent some stuff to me a little over, and I guess it makes sense. I thank you guys for your diligence, because you guys are working hard, and I know you're visiting a lot of places, but, and I had the question of if it was in other states, would you answer that stuff?
Okay. They've had no mass migration of billionaires from any state that's passed it, and they've got, you know, on the line, so the Penn State's now passed it, and on the line, many of them are going back, including Massachusetts, there's something for us to do. I know the Red Book wouldn't get from the Secretary of State, we don't have all the information.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to be appropriate for us to make a motion for a resolution, or--
Yeah. Well, I was just gonna say, thank you for, Jim, for sending that piece ahead, so we had a chance to look at it, expedite things a little bit for us, it's a great, great initiative, so thanks for your work. And at this time, on behalf of the region, I'd like to actually, a motion on behalf of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to adopt a resolution in support of the Fair Share Amendment.
Sub move.
Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I would, I will also entertain a motion on behalf of the Somerset School Committee to adopt a resolution in support of the Fair Share Amendment.
Sub move.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
So I guess it's unanimous.
We have a--
So I will be texting the MTA and telling them it's okay for publication in the next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, um, Chair, I know this is a little unorthodox, and we should have said this a few days ago. I'm seeing the news come in from Texas, I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but there was a school shooting in an elementary school. Appears that there are 14 students who have died, a teacher, and a pregnant. It's still, it's a, it's a gaudy story, I don't know if it would be appropriate to have a moment of silence. It's, uh, this is a pretty tragic and horrific incident. Next up on the docket, excuse me, next up on the docket, we have a citation for David Bellozo, retiring maintenance team leader, and I can read in this citation. Whereas David Bellozo serves as custodian and maintenance team member in the Somerset Public Schools in Somerset Berkeley, the regional school district for the past 24 years. And whereby, whereas Mr. Bellozo was a critical member of the maintenance team, he should be commended for his dedication to the needs of the facilities and, whereas he fulfilled his duties with the utmost attention to detail and steadfast commitment to excellence, earning the respect of colleagues, staff, and the administration. Whenever you saw him, you always had a smile, a long and kind of, and a sigh, and a kind of word. And he appeared by resolve that members of the Somerset, the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District Committees commend David Bellozo in official minutes, reporting this expression of appreciation and gratitude to an honored professional, extending best wishes, wishes of good health and happiness for his retirement. Yes. So, that, and I would entertain a motion on behalf of the regional school committee to adopt this citation of Mr. Bellozo.
Sub move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm also entertain a motion on behalf of the Somerset School Committee to adopt the citation for David Bellozo.
Sub move.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Moshada, my speech is loud. Wait, wait a minute. Mr. Dawson, can you hear him, Mr. Defense Maker?
What?
No?
I'll let you know.
All right. Good. All right, moving on to budget, financial matters. I consider approval of the 2022-2023 service management contract with Chartwell. So this is actually going to be, this is the fifth year of a five-year contract, as I mentioned in my communications here. We have Aaron Law and Jason Piment, here from Chartwell. If there's any questions you may have, it is our recommendation to revoke the renewal of contract for 2023 school year, based on the budget documents we appear to have. Jason, want to just come up for a minute?
I'm not speaking loudly enough, I'm afraid.
We're in the cheap seats, eh?
So I don't, there are some new school committees here, so I figured it'd be good to see a name and face for those that don't know Jason, so one who is personally responsible, making sure food is delivered to students every day, 100% of the year, so, and even during COVID and all the other challenges we've had, he's done a remarkable job, just trying to do his best for quality of students, so I really appreciate that. Aaron, this is his boss, and she's a regional, she handles multiple districts of Massachusetts and has, and we're sponsored by supporting districts, so Aaron and Jason, if there's anything you want to add to the contract or particular questions you may have, any questions?
Any questions?
I'm good.
I would just say that it's impressive with all the staffing shortages, Bob, I was just saying--
Yeah, we're just talking about that.
With all the staffing shortages throughout the world, you know, that you have been able to keep up with, you know, maintain your staff, and we have great staff, and so I just applaud you and your efforts to make sure that there's people in the kitchen floors every day, so that their kids and staff can eat. And, you know, I had the privilege to work with the Health and Wellness Committee for the last year, and I know that some of their goals include some, some things that involve Chartwell, so I think it's great that you guys support them on their, their goals and how they're trying to, you know, incorporate student choice, and, you know, they're going to be doing more polls, and they want to kind of see what the kids like, and it's great that you guys are stepping up to work with them and work with us on that, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, definitely, I'm going to keep growing that, excuse me, I'm going to keep growing that student engagement as we keep going. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, like most districts around the state and country, we kind of lost that interaction a little bit due to just trying to maintain social justice, be safe, and just trying to keep the staff we have and not lose any staff because we are interacting too much, so we're really excited to get back to it, and just with an over, there will be a lot more interaction going. We've already had a great start at the middle school this year, with the community up there. I'm going to start another one at the high school next year that I've already been interacting with students this year with. So there are some good things coming with student engagement and student choice, but it'd be really nice just to keep growing that. It was really refreshing this year to actually feel like we took a step forward. I felt the last year and a half, we were just stuck and muddled a bit there, you know, serving a meal wherever we could, either it was in a parking lot, either it was out of the back of the building, it was either delivering on a bus, so it was challenging, but we're moving forward, and it's, we're really happy to be moving forward. Thank you.
If I could just add one more thing, you know, I just checked my email, and I just took cafeteria lunch, missing, you know, not enough food or anything like that, and, you know, one of the things that I do appreciate is every time that we have these concerns, and you come in here, and you listen to the concerns, and you take an action, you leave here with an action plan, you put one in place, and then you implement. And the reason why I did that while everyone was speaking is because I don't recall the last, I'm not on social media, or whenever I see anything like that, you know, if they email me, or if they come to a meeting, and I don't think I've heard a complaint this year. You know, I'm sure there are, but it hasn't at least come to our level, so it's staying in the school level or in your level, so that's actually a real good thing, because one of the main concern hearings that I used to hear was, it wasn't enough food for the last lunch, I haven't heard that this year, so, and I'm sure it may be still happening every once in a while, but it's not a consistent thing that's come back to us, so I do appreciate that.
Yeah, and we got great leaders, we have managers at each one of our buildings that really kind of take the reins, and they really kind of take pride on daily basis, so those are the things that we work, we work with the action plan, and we really kind of dig down into our records and see where all of them happen, but, you know, we really have great staff, and they care, and they really like this community, and they really like this, they're careful with the best of the students. You know, this year was a really fun year because we actually got to see the smiles a little more, we got to interact a little more, but, you know, this is all happens, and what we do want to do at the base is all because of the staff we have, and, you know, I owe it all to them, and, you know, hopefully, they don't laugh at me too much when I'm trying to grab them up a little bit, so, but they do a great job on a daily basis.
All right, so now that was my comment. Now, my question to you is, I don't believe the state or the federal government is offering that free reduced lunch any longer for all, well, free lunch for all students, but I'm just wondering, what is the plan? Are we reverting back to where we were originally? We're going to set a price, when are we going to act on that? Or, I was just curious about those items moving forward.
So as of right now, the federal government is not, does not put any money in their bill for free for all going forward. Right now, this, the House passed in Massachusetts, a bill that will come for just the state of Massachusetts to have free for all, but it's still going to get through the Senate. So as of right now, we are in a pattern where we're going back to the National School Lunch Program next year, where it's free, paid, reduced, so, but we're still in a holding pattern. We do, I think Aaron can speak on a little more to it, she talked to the state more recent than I have about the tools, about pricing and stuff like that.
Yeah, so thinking back on what Jason just mentioned, the House has passed an approval with appropriations of $120 billion, I think, to fund at a state level, free meals next year for students, it hasn't gone through the Senate yet. So as you mentioned, we're sort of in a holding pattern, but we're assuming worst-case scenario is the budget that we presented, that will go back to National School Lunch Program guidelines from pre-pandemic, which is paid, free, and reduced. The USDA that governs national school lunch programs has an equity tool that they issue every year at the state level, and that drives what your average meal price should be, you know, it's like the formula, and for next year, they said the average price point should be right around $3.31, I just reached out to the state this week. The tool hasn't been issued, where you can plug in numbers and get the answer, but he did say, look for around an average price point of $3.31, which I've shared with Mr. Taro recently.
And I actually just shared, I would think--
Yeah, that just, just came, came to our attention recently, so. But the budget was built on current pricing, did not include any price adjustments for next year, because we're sort of in a holding pattern, we might have to come back at some point, or if you wanted to discuss it tonight, I don't know how much conversation has already been had, so I don't want to make any assumptions.
No, no, not, we didn't get into any details, I just gave them an update--
Yep.
--where we are with the contract of the meal pricing, what we have to do from district responsibility, the price equity calculation. So we're, we're a little bit behind based on what the state model is, and it really depends on whether the state's going to fund the 100% free meal program, what does that mean? We can approve the contract, revisit this as more information comes out, so we get that contract in place, make everything in motion, because even though the end of the year is starting, we can start thinking about how they're ramping up for next year, and then we could readdress this at a later date to set the meal price.
I'm glad you mentioned that it's on the, I'm sorry, I'm glad that you mentioned that it's in the state, it's in the Senate's hand, because now I know who I have to reach out, because in my opinion, there are still many families who are struggling, and many families unfortunately don't fill out the proper paperwork, either whatever the case may be, and that's why, at least now I know who I have to call, and I would urge all my members, fellow members, to do the same, because I think it's--
Absolutely.
But I am questioning how the federal government will feel that the state is paying a certain portion, because I know that's usually a state number, but I'm assuming other states probably do the same.
I do know Maine is, has, they did it earlier in the school year, already passed to fund free meals for the students in Maine next year, and I do believe it's maybe in a few other states, but in New England, Massachusetts is the only one that I'm aware of that put that forward, but it could be elsewhere, too.
Thank you.
Based on the numbers that you presented, that based on the numbers that you presented, this does not, this assumes that we're going back to the--
Yes.
Yes.
Conservative, because--
Conservative, yep. I'll just add, I'm totally in favor of extending that contract, but I want to extend my appreciation to you, Jason, and your team, because you had not an easy past three years, so you've risen to the occasion every time, and so we really appreciate that, the entire team, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion on behalf of Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to approve the chocolate food service for July 1st, 2022, June 30th, 2023.
So, Mr. Fens, if I could just add to that motion, you know, like you authorized me to execute the contract once we get that, that termination provision that we have through that bottom council recommendation provision. So I think last year you authorized me to execute the contract once that's finalized.
Do we make that as a second motion? We have a follow-up motion?
Yeah, that was easy.
So we have a motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On behalf of the Somerset School Committee, I will entertain a motion to approve the contract with Chartwell's Food Service for July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, and authorize Ronald Tarot to execute said contract.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, so why don't you speak at the first?
I was writing vigorously, trying to remember what Ron was going to say.
Do you vote for Mr. Tarot in the organization to approve the contracts?
The contract, so move.
Second.
Motion for discussion. Here in, I'm in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. You too. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have consider approval of the 2022, 2023 contracts for boiler services.
Yes, I believe in front of everybody, it's a memo with our recommendation. There were a total of four bids for boiler service and recommending Arden Engineering out of Kentucky, Rhode Island. They were the lowest, it's how you would respond to better than it is based on price. So, you know, we don't have much stipulations from that unless it's a disqualifying item within the proposal. And I did do a reference check to make sure that we get the company. And I did speak to another district who we use those for seven, this company for seven years and were responsible for a long time.
Any questions?
Let's make like this. Who's our current provider? Right now it's Advanced Care and they did, they've done a very good job this year too. So it's important prices, price, so we have to kind of follow that.
All right. I entertain a motion for the SSC for the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District to approve awarding boiler services and repairs contract to Arden Engineering Constructors LLC of Kentucky, Rhode Island for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023.
So.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion, please, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
I'll entertain a motion on behalf of the Somerset School Committee to approve, to approve the awarding of boiler services and repairs contract to Arden Engineering out of Kentucky, Rhode Island for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Next, we have electrical, electrical repair work. This is an electrical, actually it's an electrical contracted services. So this is, we received two bids based on our evaluation of both companies. We determined that the lowest qualified responsive bidder is Beta Corp and they are out of West Bridgewater, Mass.
Okay, for my new, I have a question on it because it looks like the J A C is.
They have a lower price than they have the most responsive, responsible bidder. So, you know, you would go through the criteria evaluation piece. So you're right that the numbers are lower. But Beta Corp is the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. So I have to go based on that.
Can you explain to me again why that?
Sure.
Just because.
So what happens is these various components that we go through the state point of sale, we go through, we go through that requirement. It could be non-laborious, tax compliant. There's a number of things we have to check off the box when we go for evaluating these bids. And if one of those criterias are not met, it's in essence a disqualification, it's that bidder. So if it is a disqualifying qualification, then the next bidder, that's what the next lowest bidder, if they met the criteria, then we would move forward with that. It's only two bidders here and that's what happened with this particular case. Thank you for asking, because I was probably just kept repeating the same thing and I wasn't saying it.
And it makes sense on the other one because it was lower numbers, but on this one.
Yeah, it reoccurred.
Sorry. It was for all of us to have here.
Is it unusual to have two bidders? My understanding is the last time I think we only had one by our own and that was before me, so I think Lindsey had, thankfully Lindsey had that done before us.
And Louise was our, is that her contract?
Is that her contract? And we weren't dissatisfied with this work. He was always responsive, just like they've got the criteria we have to follow. It's a sealed competitive process. They just prescribe laws we have to follow. So just for the record, it isn't because of quality work, it's more of the process. Exactly. Exactly.
All right. So I would entertain a motion on behalf of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to approve awarding the electrical repair contract to Vetco of West Bridgewater, Mass.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Aye.
I will entertain a motion on behalf of the Somerset School Committee to approve, approve awarding the electrical repair contract to Vetco from West Bridgewater, Mass for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023.
So move.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. No, it's serious.
Are you voting no?
I'm voting no. I, I have a hard time recommending a company who is going to charge us more because, but yet the current company that we have who is the lowest bidder, he is doing a decent job. So I have an issue with that. So, and I understand it's the process, it's not, you know, against the institution.
Just to the director, Robyn, Victor voted no.
Twice.
Twice. Okay.
Next up, we have plumbing work. Plumbing services?
Plumbing services, yes. So there was a total bid, total was two bids received for this contract service. And we're recommending DDS Industries, their car vendor, we're satisfied with the work that they perform and we deem them the lowest responsive, responsible bidder.
Close. During that, what's the motion for the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to approve awarding the plumbing work contract to DDS Industries of Somerset, Mass for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023? So move.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Here in, all in favor?
Aye.
Close.
I'll entertain a motion for the Somerset School Committee to approve awarding the plumbing work contract to DDS Industries of Somerset, Mass for plumbing work for the period beginning July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023.
So, second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Just as a point of reference, the new school committee members, these are typically a three-year contract. One year, we made it, it's just similar to what we do for jobs. So next year we'll bring this back to you. If we're satisfied with the work, we will provide a recommendation to the new. If not, then we can look at possible, or we can give them a pick of the process.
Thank you, Ms. Joe. At this time, we have, is there any public input? Do you want to, the actual, if you trust the committees?
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to mention something. I didn't mention it last night because I knew we were having a joint meeting. I want to congratulate and also thank the committee who ran the walk on Saturday. It was, it was great having to have everyone in together in the track and supporting such a great cause. I know last year, you know, I remember doing a whole state park, I think, because we had to do it remotely, but it was really nice to see everyone there together, having a meeting together. And I was just wondering, do you know how much is raised?
I don't.
Yeah, because I asked, because it looked, it looked like a great turnout. So kudos.
400, my instruments.
Yeah, so kudos to the, those who put it together and look forward to it again next year.
Anyone else? Next up, we have executive session. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, ASC, and the custodian, administrative assistants and cafeteria units. The joint committee will not return to open session after this executive session.
Mr. Chair, does the chair declare so? I think it's not on there, but it's, it's said.
Okay.
And the chair so declares.
The chair so declares.
The chair so declares.
Yeah. So the Somerset Public School, it was an open meeting violation then.
Oh, okay.
Because we didn't say that. So we're trying to avoid any, we learn as we go along.
Yeah, just, I see our student representatives. Okay, roll call members. Ms. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Ferrera?
Aye.
Mrs. Rainer Stainbierati?
Aye.
Ms. Machado?
Aye.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Aye.
And Rich Fensman, there was another one as well.
Pursuant to Mass, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Custodian, Administrative Assistance and Cafeteria Units. The committee will not return to open session and the chair so declares.
So move.
And a motion in a second. By a roll call vote, Mr. Gom?
Aye.
Ms. Quazo?
Aye.
Ms. Ferrera?
Aye.
Ms. Machado?
Aye.
Ms. Machado?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well.
I call this meeting the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to order six roll call meetings. Notice I'm approaching the string of the meeting law. Any personnel can audio or video recording of this public meeting or any form of transmitting. The meeting is a ready meeting. The committee is therefore advised that such reporting or transfers may be made, whether perceived or unperceived, or those present and deemed knowledgeable and possible. So that will be a roll call of members. Ms. Andrews?
Present.
Ms. Ferrera?
Present.
Ms. Rainer Stainbierati?
Present.
Ms. Machado?
Present.
Ms. O'Brien? Ms. Solomon?
Present.
So, Pierre Puccini?
Present.
And Rich has a good presence as well. And from administration, Mrs. Haskell, Ben Ramirez, our department, our reporting secretary, Ben. For those who are in the public, please join us with a quick.
The United States of America, the children of the public, which stands one nation under God, in whose history liberty is just as strong.
The next meeting is scheduled meeting of the, this committee is Tuesday, June 21st, September 21st, Somerset Berkeley Regional School.
That's right. Just for the record, we also have our principal, she's, she's high as that chair. She's disguised behind a camera.
Thank you. Okay, I would ask that now we just move up our student representative board. So do you want to entertain the tonight, Sophia?
Hello, everyone. Sorry, we're not in the last meeting. I was, I'm not certain who you are, so.
Sure.
So, a quick update, we didn't have a meeting this month for the student committee, but there has been a lot of activity at the high school, so I'll take you through a little bit. So the prom was a great success. We're glad to stay beyond. Everybody had a great time. Students were able to wear their Apple bags, with scholarships, gift cards, get their prom, you can't forget the fact. It was really successful. Everybody loved it. Had a great time. So it was also commitment day for seniors. This was a good opportunity on the second birthday to hopefully be a player next year, whether that's college, the workforce, military, et cetera. Everybody really had a great time celebrating for future members. The school also took pictures of the students' commitment day and today posted in the packed hallway corridor area for all the pictures of our faces with like, I'm going to college, I'm going to work for it. So it was really nice to see our faces around the school and we've got this, and everybody was very structured. That was really nice. So. There was currently a dodgeball tournament in place as we speak. This is a fundraiser where courses we give to art teacher Jimmy Trapplin, who's had cancer treatments she was kind of going through. There's many teams involved and very competitive and students are having a great time. I can hear the spirits. The school also put on a power cup. This was the first time a power cup was taken place in many years. It was a really enjoyable event. We brought the kids together, we had a case rally, student bonding. Congratulations to the sophomore who's completed the year. Thank you that I have. So AP and MCAS testing has also completed many students this month. Huge congratulations to all students who completed testing. It was no easy feat to complete those testings and it was a little stressful for them, but they will all come through it. I'm sure it's been pretty good to be able to say, very proud of you for this. The drama department put on its rendition of The Little Mermaid this month. Shout out to the casting crew and directors who put on a fantastic show, Four Nights. It was a really great show. Had a bunch of seniors, having a fun performance up in the school. It was really good to have a musical after having a really bad one. It's very, it was also a fairly well called, it was a really great show. There's also the Spring Pops Night and Spring Concert took place last week. The Fire, Orst, Jet and Band found their fine performances for the year, as well as the Winter Color Guard, Winter Profession. They showed fire, had their senior nights and their final performances. Spring sport, the Women's State tournaments, as well as finishing their seasons, their regular scheduled seasons and having their senior nights. A shout out to my technical sports team here, but the men's volleyball club had their game against sports in the high school. And we won very successfully and it was a very good game. It was really great. They were very happy to, Michelle, we're still been practicing for many weeks. The art and technology departments merged for an art show incorporating technology into fashion and, into a fashion show where students work with technology classroom, work with technology classes and their fashion classes. And they merged together to create these technology, fashion, cool high build, it was really awesome. And then there's also showings for the culinary classes, ceramics, jewelry, arts and metals, glass metals. And ceramics were also sold and the proceeds also went to the charity programs. As Ms. Chano already said, the Walk the Walk took place this weekend to support acceptance of autism and neurodiversity. Right, it's a second event. And this was mental health awareness month. So our guidance department put together a presentation, got all four lunches. got all four lunches, talking about ways to reduce anxiety and get mental health support at our school. There were stickers giving out QR codes with places that you could get mental health assistance if needed. Just tried to stop the stigma and help students to recover. The overarching theme was mental health as well. Students signed a poster hanging in our school in this hallway, signing, standing in solidarity with the school. It was special. Also, one of our capstone projects was put on, and we have now the water filter, the station, sorry. But that was put in a few weeks ago, and there has been over 2,500 bottles filled, replacing plastic water bottles since it was put in, and that's really amazing, really reducing our carbon footprint. And it was a great success event, so shout out to Ms. Allison Portis, who was to implement to our school. And finally, since this is my last school meeting, I would like to say thank you to all the members of the committee for giving me an opportunity to share my voice and share the students' voice to the committee. I will take the skills that I have learned from coming to the long meetings and hope to use that for my future endeavors. In the fall, I'll be attending Ford University in New York, and I do hope to see you all in Jersey soon. But for now, this has been past me, thank you so much, really, everybody. It was a really great experience, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Good report. Okay, thanks. Where I discover? All right. The citation for the paper. Whereas Sophia Puccini served as a student representative for Somerset Public, which I've seen this year, as well as president of the Student Advisory Council of the past year. Over her high school career, Sophia has also was also a member of the Showfire, Girl Up, Best Buddies, and Ducka. And whereas she faithfully and conscientiously performed her duties on behalf of the students of Somerset Public Regional High School while providing the committee with student perspective. And whereas she is most instrumental in informing the committee of student activities, upcoming events, and upcoming event systems of local regional high school, as well as helping the committee better understand the needs and concerns of the student population. And whereas her talents, her commitment, her academic success, and as a leader role among her peers, resulting in her mission toward the University of Bellevue Business School, where she will study global business and environmental and social requirements. And hereby resolve the membership of Somerset Public Regional School Committee, meant Sophia Puccini, in the efficient minutes, in gorgeous expression of appreciation, gratitude for student, member of the department, Somerset Public Regional School. Sending her best wishes for happiness and success in all her future education and career endeavors.
See you next week.
Come back and visit anytime.
Oh, for the reorganization, yeah. I thought we went through this once before, and I was, we were ruled by open reading law, and since I am not a member of the committee, it's not my job to, so, but since. You are the chairman. But since you are, you are still the chair, so you can, I think.
Oh, well, Mr. Fensenmaker, I will first begin by asking you, would you like to remain as chair? Or would you, have you served your one year and ready to move on, or? So I'm gonna start off by asking you that question.
I, I would, I'm ready to start back.
All right, so with that, I would like to nominate Ms. Andrews to be the chair of our committee if she agrees to do so.
I will second that nomination.
The people are.
Is that a question?
Well, not that. All right, other any other nominations for chair? All in favor? Aye.
I would stand.
Congratulations.
Um, thank you, I think.
All right, you're in charge now.
Oh, oh, really?
Yeah.
In all seriousness, I appreciate the vote of confidence and trust, and I will work hard to be worthy of it. I'm very fortunate that even though I've only been here for a relatively short term, I've had the opportunity to do fabulous too. So, I intend to lean on my career experience. Uh, so at this time, let's see, I need a nomin, a motion to nominate a vice chair.
Manager.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Fensenmaker to serve as vice chair. Not, he has no choice but to continue to. To be required to help me. So we have a nomination for Mr. Fensenmaker for vice chair. One other nomination. But no, he didn't. All right, so we have a motion and a second. I have Rich Fensenmaker serve as vice chair. So all those in favor?
Aye.
You're not gonna oppose. No, okay.
I would just say that I've enjoyed being the chair for this past year. Well, cooperatively, I'm very, very.
Okay, all right, I'll get the hang of this eventually. All right, so the next item on the agenda under budget and financial is the auditor report for the year ending June 30th, 2021, from Roselli Clark and Associates.
Madam Chair, is it possible, while we're getting this set up, to have the April Raider Visionaries of the Month, possibly a citation or two in the.
Sure, are we zooming, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Sure. So why don't we recognize our April Raider Visionaries of the Month? So we have Haley Cardoza, academic, Nathan Caruso, academic, Kevin Comfrey, independent, Alec Ferrera, independent, Jessica Hagan, respectful, Benjamin Olivera, resilient, Mia Russ, digital citizen, Corey, I hope I say this right, is it Pickle? Digital citizen, and Ryan Vieira, independent. So congratulations to all of those students for all the work they did to earn that recognition. All right, can we go back to the next, especially the.
That might be a little bit longer.
We'll move on to some second.
Hey, Tony. Hold on one second. Hey, Tony, we're just gonna test the audio. Test.
I, I can hear you.
All right, perfect. Yes, we can.
Okay.
What I'm gonna try to do here is kind of get to the initial of the school committee meeting. I apologize for the technical difficulty. Everybody, it's Tony Roselli, he is with the audit for Roselli Clark. And he'll present the management letter, and he'll go over his findings, the results of the FY21 annual audit.
Hi, everyone, thank you for having me. Ron, you gonna share the screen?
I'm gonna give you permission to see the screen. Okay, Tony, hold on.
I can't see your screen.
Are you looking, right, so you wanna, you wanna put the management letter up, or do you just.
Oh, I, I can try to do that, let me think. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Sorry about that, I thought you were gonna run it through, that's fine. Okay, so we'll start up on page, page is down. So we break up the management letter. For those of you who, this is basically the end process of the audit, we call it the post audit meeting. And basically, we go through and summarize all our results. Some of our, some of the things we disclose are just informational items, things that you should be aware of. They're not necessarily findings, some of these things are out of control, but things we can put in the back of their, you know, strategic plans going forward, or things we can think about, things we can do a little bit better. And then we have another section where we just put some findings that we listed from the audit. There were no material findings, which is good news, so we didn't have to do a, what's called a material weakness or a significant deficiency. The findings are what we call controlled deficiencies, which are the lowest type of finding, and hopefully are gonna be very easy for Ron and his team to resolve. So, so we'll start with the long-term obligations update. I always recall my clients, I like to talk about OPEB and pensions. Those are two liabilities that aren't, like, very apparent on the balance sheet. It's not like going out and finding a big chunk of debt, and you have this liability. It's very visible, like you make a payment every month. The OPEB is not like that, it's like, kinda like this hidden thing that's out there that years from now may become a big problem, you know, 10, 10 years or less, 12 years, could become a big problem, but it's good to start thinking about it now, and starting to nudge your meta-communities to help you, you guys tackle this. So, so in the first slide, we talk about the liability which increased over $1.2 million in fiscal 2021. Now stands at 20.3 million. And that's basically due to the market conditions, the discount rates were dropping a lot on the AA ratings, helping measure the liability in the present value. So, so this caused the increase. So, the amount you have in your fund now is only $115,000, less than 1% of the entire obligation. And, and this is very common in regional school districts, because you go to your member towns, and you try to get some money, and you try to talk about OPEB, but they usually do not give you the funding, because they're more worried about the assessment for the normal curriculum education process. And usually, you don't, you're not successful. But we put it out here, if you wanna use the management letter to show your towns that if we're pushing this, aren't sure they have OPEB issues as well. It's just here to help, help the process. But, but like I said, you folks are severely underfunded. Even some of the other regional school districts that we are looking at have five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars, some have over a million. You guys are towards the lower end of the, of the scale. So, any questions on the OPEB? I'll have that over.
Tony, this is Ron. The school committee has made an effort, they recently approved some transfers from E and D to the OPEB fund. They've, they've increased the contribution to FY23 operating budget by $10,000. They're gonna be increasing that incrementally each year by $10,000 to start addressing the OPEB occupation.
It's a start, no, that's good to hear. I know, I know you folks have always been interested in OPEB, as far back as five years ago when you first started talking about it. So it's, it's nice to see that you're finally able to at least get some funds to address, to address problems. You're not gonna solve it in one day. What's gonna end up happening is when your pension is fully funded, 10 or 12 years down the road, you'll probably be able to get, catch up on your funding at that point, because you'll have a big assessment number in your budget already. So hopefully that's something that, you know, a lot of us won't be around to see that day, but hopefully it's something that you guys are thinking about and see like you are. Okay, on the pension liability, the district, the district's in, the county is in decent shape, Bristol County. The pension liability decreased by about 300,000, so your liability is only 3 million. What's good about regional school district is that most of your pension liabilities are picked up by the state through the teachers and our retirement system, so it's no cost to the district. So this covers just your non-teacher pensions. So, so 3 million is not a bad number, it did get reduced to 300,000. It, it's at, the funding ratio for the county is at 65%, so when you compare it to the 1% of the OPEB discount barrier that we gave pension is, it should be funded probably within the next 10 years. So it will free up some money, like I said, at that time. So, so you're in good shape on that particular front. Okay, moving on to network security. So, this is just a reminder, we had this in the management letter for at least five years. I can, until I see the side of prime stock, I'll just keep putting it in here as a reminder. It's not a finding, but it is a reminder just to stay vigilant, keep your employees trained, make sure that they're not opening phishing type of schemes, somehow getting involved with user things and passwords, especially when you're doing like payroll, and you're. Especially when you're doing like payroll and you're changing, you know, where money's going to go and employees direct deposit, you make sure you're getting... I hate to say that you should get the personal command to fill out post- audit, opposed to trying to do it through email and whatnot because that just creates, a couple of years ago, created a major wrong for a lot of folks out there in the Commonwealth. So again, just keep vigilant on that. Any questions on that? Fraud prevention, again, just look at your cash, looking at your cash processes, which are... A lot of the school lunch is now done online, but still have the cash handling. You've got some of your after-school activities that do cash, I mean, summer programs that do cash. Just keep an eye on that. I know we had done a couple of processes a couple of years ago. So I think one with the summer program for kids, and we found that they could have been improved. So look at those areas and see if there are any vulnerable areas in the processing of cash. Any questions on that? Okay, last on the information letter is the, just the GASP update. This is primarily from Ron. Basically, if you have any leases out there, we need to be aware of them. A whole bunch of disclosures and different reporting that we have to do in accordance with the GASP, which is the authority that oversees your financial statements. So I don't know if you've got laptop leases and any of those really big leases. I'm not interested in like a small copy of leases in material, but if anything big out there, we should be made aware of those.
Tony, that one, like...
Any questions on the informational life before we move on to the findings?
Yeah, Tony, I have one question, this is Ron again. If we went to purchase tax books, let's say it was a three-year payment plan, there was no interest associated with it, we pay a third, a third, a third, that's not considered a long-term lease because there's no financing.
I'm glad you brought that up. That, we would probably look at GASP 96, which is a year away, under subscriptions. If it's, if we, if it met certain criteria, and I'm not 100% familiar with that GASP yet, if it met certain criteria, even though they don't fall under subscription, if it meets certain criteria, like you're talking about there, a three-year payback, it might, it doesn't fall under the lease accounting, so let's not worry about it now, but it could fall under the GASP 96, which is 2023. So we can talk about it as we get closer to this year.
Thank you.
Okay, on the findings list. So this is something that we find very common with school districts because the Department of Education requires you to disclose all expenses to them through the end-of-year report, which includes encumbrances. But in the accounting world and in the Department of Revenue world, an encumbrance is not an expense. It is just a holdover of your fund balance. So in the past, this hasn't really been a big issue because it hasn't been material. But the encumbrances were fairly large this year, and there were quite a few of them that were expensive of the substantial year. So they were basically being recorded incorrectly. And we've gone through this with Ron incorrectly in the eyes of the Division of Local Services, but correct in the eyes of the end-of-year report. So the confusion causes, so we made the necessary accounting entries in the financial statements, and we discussed how this should be done with Ron going forward. I think he's put a process in place to fix this so it doesn't happen in the future. And again, it's been happening for years, but it's always been so minor that we haven't really brought it up. I don't know if there are any questions on that. Okay, next is federal grants. We did find that there was some things or items that we looked at with regards to the federal grants. And if you weren't having a single audit, we'd have to call it a significant deficiency. But because you're not having a single audit, we don't. So in the future, the district could qualify for a single audit if it gets enough stimulus money or grant money from the federal government or passed through the state from the federal government. So then if these, one of them is a period of performance, you have certain periods of time where you have to spend the funds. You can't pre-spend, then you can't spend after the period of performance. They give you this 12-month period for the most part to spend your money in. And so the district should pay close attention to that, especially in years where, you know, you could, could end up with a single audit. I don't know how close you were this year, you're getting closer.
Tony, we have a question.
That's one thing I was really clear on. What do you mean by a single audit versus the kind of audit that we do on an annual basis?
Okay, I think I've heard, it's hard to hear, but I think I've heard why, what is a single audit or something? Why would we qualify? So the single audit is a federal compliance audit. It's only required if you receive and spend more than $750,000 in federal funds. So the federal government gives you a grant, say a million dollars, and you spend over $750,000 of that grant in 2021, then you qualify for a single audit, which kicks you into a different type of audit in terms of compliance. And it adds a lot of work to what we do. We have not had to do a single audit for the district since we've been doing audits for about six years. And, but they are getting, those expenses are getting bigger. There's more stimulus out there, there's more programs that are coming in. So at some point, you might get close to that. So again, this is just kind of a, not a warning, but kind of like a, you know, a reminder or, you know, for Ron that as you get closer to a single audit, you could have a problem on a federal grant if this continues.
Do you have to do both, Tony? Would you have to do your, our normal audit that would come for our normal operations, improve on our funds, but then come aside and audit? Is it essentially two full audits, but one has certain requirements for the federal budget?
Yeah, yeah, there's a whole separate reporting that gets issued. So right now, you're getting a financial statement audit, you're getting an end-of-year audit report, and you're getting management letters. So you're getting three documents right now. The single audit would add a fourth document to that call, you know, it's called a single audit right on the face. So that would be a completely separate body holder report with its own list of findings and procedures and so on and so forth. So I didn't hear you clearly, but hopefully, I answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next is tailings. So tailings are old checks, checks that you've written to someone and they have the cash. So you should do a policy every year, looking at these old checks and trying to reach the person that the check is entitled for, or the company that the check is entitled for. Determine that they still exist, if they've gone out of business. And if you can't reach them, then what you would do is advertise, and you can actually do it on your website. Once you've done the advertising, if nobody claims that money, the district has to keep it. It's called abandoned product. So it hasn't been done in a while over at the district. I'm not sure if it's ever been done. There are some items that would qualify for this. It's not material, but I would suggest you just get into a practice and kind of look at this and doing it each year.
Tony, I'd like to add...
Any questions on that?
If I could just add, the process we go through, Sidolides and myself were working out a policy so we can have that in place. We did reach out to the Mars Executive Director to see if they could help us on draft policy. And then she's been doing a good job tracking outstanding checks and trying to follow through, so we're focused on that as well.
Okay, so this is what I like to hear, you know, by the time we get to the post-audit, I like to hear that the financial team is already working on the recommendations, which seems like the case here. Last but not least, and this is something we have, we've put in the management letter the last couple of years, and it's going to become a little more prevalent now. The Federal Monetary Oversight Committee, if you're paying attention to the news and the financial markets, they're raising rates. They're raising rates on bonds, they're trying to fight inflation. So bond rates, mortgage rates gone from like 2.5% to over 6% in like two months. What typically happens is the bank yields fall that next. So once the mortgage rates and the bond rates are fully saturated, the banks start to offer more attractive yields. So I put it out here, you only earn $3,200 on cash balances of $4 million. So definitely, in the last two years, there's been nothing to earn. So, you know, the rates have been so low, they've been next to zero. But those should start going up. And if they can get close to 1%, 1% of $4 million is $40,000. So I just put it out here just for a reminder that you can actually pick up some extra revenue if these rates do start to increase. So start working with your bank, start looking at it, start monitoring them. And I believe that's my last, my last comment. If you have any comments, be happy to go ahead and address them.
Anybody have questions? Questions for me?
Good job.
Let's always vote for improvement. Tony, thank you very much that you may not have any questions. We appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you for saving me the three-hour round trip. That's more important. Now I get to go have my dinner at quarter of seven, not at nine o'clock.
Very good. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'll see you all soon, and I'll talk to you over the summer, Ron, with this getting back here.
Sounds great.
Great, thank you.
Can I just have a question? This is how we really stand with the auditors contract. I just remember, I know that we had gotten an extension...
No, we actually, I went out to bid, this is the first year on three-year contract. So we're going to do two more years. Two or five, so I think we did three years. Usually, I usually typically do great, and I go out to see if they're going to give us a change up. He's actually, I think there's going to be a different person leading this year to change his teams with a different set of eyes.
Correct.
And last year, he had two different people. He had the president was there with a new person. I think that new person may be taken on, so we confirm with them that he's changing his teams with a different set of eyes. We're going to have that in mind.
All right, next on the agenda on the teaching and learning, we have an update on the MEAS renovation.
Okay, so as most of you probably remember, if you weren't here, our decennial visit for MEAS was April 3rd and 6th. To those of you who gave up your Sunday night to participate in that, I appreciate jumping into that. So every 10 years, MEAS comes to do, in overall accreditation, kind of an audit of the school and how we're doing in terms of curriculum construction and assessment. And a person team came from schools all over New England. Most of the people were from Massachusetts, but schools all over New England and came to kind of look and see what was going on in terms of teaching and learning in the school. They had been here 18 months prior for a collaborative conference where we had done a self-study and kind of looked internally at the processes that were going on. And we gave recommendations as to what we thought. They came in and said, you know, yes, this, no, that. And they gave us some things to work on, and then, as we all know, COVID hit. So I think what you're going to kind of hear and what you're going to see come out of the decennial report is very similar to what came out of the collaborative conference report. Not that we didn't make progress over the 18 months, which is what we're talking about, as we will be sharing with MEAS. We made more progress, I think, than we kind of thought we did. And it was a really nice process to go through the decennial preparation process and kind of go, oh, my gosh, we did this, we did that, and then put everything together because there really was a lot of positive things that happened, even though we were amidst COVID. And then they came and they did their visit. They gave us preliminary information, but the report has not been shared yet with Mr. Swinover and myself. And the information that we received from them is technically embargoed, so there isn't a whole lot I can share until the report comes out. And then that is a public document that I'm sure I'll be back here presenting to all of you again with a lot more detail. But it was a person team that came, just logistics. We did house them at the Fairfield Inn in Somerset, which is something that was nice to have so close this time when we did the collaborative conference. We were not able to have them in town, so that was nice. They appreciated, we pride ourselves on being nice, those are the seasons when they come. And they did talk up the fact that we sent them to Chili's the first night. We did aviary takeout the second night. And Jason Morrison, who I really can't say enough about, the service that he did for breakfast and lunch and taking care of all their needs while they were here in our conference room. Huge shout out to him and his staff because they did a really, really nice job. And they just, they were rating, they were rating them, it was like, it was really nice. So the, oh, thank you. So the decennial overview, what we started with and what we were charged to do, first of all, is to kind of present an overview of where we were. So I kind of want to get the highlights of what we did with that. So there were a lot of, there were some changes that happened since they were here for their collaborative conference. One of the major ones was that we initiated the Project Lead the Way courses, which are all familiar with. We have strongly endorsed that, we really appreciate that, and just a little love for that, particularly our science pathway. We have four applicants, students interested in that program, and it is healthy, healthy, healthy in terms of the numbers of students going for our third year, the medical intervention programs. We're really, really excited about continuing to grow our private lead the way courses. These are all other changes that have happened since, since they came to our collaborative conference. So classes that we've added, expansion of programming, we expanded our co-teaching programs. This year, we did some mentoring with our co-teachers and have received some really, really positive feedback about that. We reintroduced robotics, we started our summer attacking programs last year. So there was a lot of changes that happened in the last two years. There were a lot of extracurricular additions since the fall of 2020. We're super proud that for the first year ever, we used to ball play. So we had two productions that happened this year. I already know what the next ball play is, I can't, that's also embargoed, but very excited about it. Our boys volleyball club, Sophia Mushini, a great shout out to that. There's just, there's a lot of great things that we have done in the past two years, two and a half years. Our curator block was restructured, it's still a work in progress, we're still working on this. Something that I'm really proud about that's happened in the last couple of weeks is we did reach out to the Heron Project, which you may remember Chris Heron came in to the school. Gosh, I don't know if it was going on five or so years ago. They have created a whole curriculum that is connected to the guidance CASA standards and the health curriculum standards, and we have... And we have enrolled in, I can't remember the exact wording, but in their club, and they are providing us with a whole bunch of free resources that we are going to use as part of our freshman, sophomore Raider Block curriculum moving forward. So, that is kind of exciting real information. And these are some examples this year of Raider Block enrichment activities that we offer in the spring semester for our students. And I'm really proud of, particularly, and I have to give shout outs to Mr. Kudo, Mr. Gleason, Devon Rodrick, one of our seniors, who created our diversity club, which was started up in January. And I'm proud to say we already have a commission statement. We have weekly meetings talking about diversity inclusion. That is completely, completely student-led. We show up and we are there to kind of facilitate conversation, but we don't really need to facilitate it because they have taken it and plugged with it. So, really proud of that, that our seniors are obviously graduating next year, next year, next week. And they've already asked, can we come back until the end of the school year to Raider Block just to be able to participate in diversity clubs? So, we have taken off and we're letting them run with it. I'm not gonna say we're running with it, but we're not. We gave them the ball and they had all the facts, and we're really excited about that. Mr. Mia, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the big football week, because that was the exciting one. We did our aims last year and this year. So, last year, we had the theme of we're gonna turn lemons into lemonade. And our whole year was about taking what we were given in COVID and making the, you know, positive out of maybe a negative. At the end of the year, we had a Dells Lemonade Truck show up next to our deal. This year, our theme, and that's actually the wrong date. It was this year was inhale, exhale, and set sail. And everything is about looking forward. And we had to kind of get ourselves out of COVID and look to the future, which is part of what the whole MEAS idea is about. We celebrate, I think, every appreciation made with the sun. We appreciate everybody. We do Lucky Ducks from the staff who pulled, we can't say the word right, because it's guitar. We can add, but we have the whole prizes and things like that. We changed our Student of the Month, as you know, to our Visionaries of the Month that we honor. And as I said, we celebrated last year with Dells Lemonade. We have some ideas for our setting sail theme for this year, but we're excited about that. And then even in the midst of COVID, and many of you kind of looked through this with us, there were a lot of positives that happened even in the midst of that whole year that we wanted to kind of look back and kind of celebrate. We were one of the very few schools in the area that even during the COVID year, graduations weren't happening. We made graduation happen with all of your support in August, which was a big deal. We had the prom at Gillette Stadium last year and this year, which they were both a huge hit. We started formalizing our program of sending kids back to their elementary and their middle school programs. We've been doing that for a few years, but it's a formalized process now, which I believe is gonna happen next Wednesday. I don't know, the days are all kind of running together right now, because they're moving so fast. But the kids, the students get to go back from to their elementary schools, their middle school experiences. And last year, one of the students came back for graduations and said, you know, Dr. Wilson, I got every single teacher that I've ever had since kindergarten to sign my name. And I thought, and they were really kind of emotional about it, and I got emotional about it, because that's a pretty, that's a pretty cool thing to say. Not that every teacher that every student has is, you know, is still with us in the district, but for that student, it was a really big deal. The principals of the middle schools and the principals of the elementary schools really celebrate the kids. And it's a really big deal for everybody. So, again, looking back and reflecting on a time when we kind of look back and we're like, oh, my gosh, like, how much craziness was there in the world? There's a lot of positives in that as well. So, one of the things that obviously we're most proud of, having moved forward with since our collaborative conference, is establishing our vision of the graduate. And I could go through my speech again on how we developed a vision of the graduate. If you all have heard of that before. But that is one of the major things that we were charged with doing is we did not have a vision of the graduate. We created our vision of the graduate. We're now working towards embedding it into our instruction and assessment practices. Some of that's organically happening, which we hope is going to happen, and it is happening. And that was one of the meetings that we had with the MEAS teams. They were, we had some teachers that would come in and present some of the work that they're already doing to connect to the vision of the graduate. You know, Sophia talked about civics projects and capstone projects. We have capstone projects. Zachary Martin is a senior who created a Spanish children's book. It's all written in Spanish, and the whole theme of it is how to be a Raider. His project is going down to, I think he's going to chase, and he's presenting that to the students. So, these are the goals that we were charged with from the collaborative conference. The goals are not going to look very different than we get when you receive the report in the fall. We still need to work on, we did develop the vision of, at that time, it was called the Blue Raider. We're calling it the vision of the graduate now. We have developed that. Now, we need to look at how to embed it across all curriculum instruction and assessment practices. And then how are we gonna assess that we're actually doing what the vision says we are? We want to continue to create, normalize opportunities for internships, partner business partnerships, cultural enrollment, provide experiences to support student career college and social emotional needs and readiness, create a classroom culture that provides instruction and assessment opportunities for students to be active learners who lead their own learning. One of the things that MEAS did while they were here is the eight individuals from the team did get to go into every single classroom, minus two people, all the faculty that we had. And that was only because of the later the schedule fell. They did get to see everybody at least once in their classrooms. So, they did get a really nice overview of what was going on in the classrooms. While we did set up the schedule for MEAS, we did not give the schedule out to the faculty and staff. And that was kind of by design, so that we were going to get more of an organic, you know, what's really happening in classes, rather than people knowing, you know, they're coming at this specific time. So, I think we had a good read on what was going on. And we had a lot of really positive feedback about what was happening in the classrooms. And then finally, write the curriculum in a consistent format for all courses and all departments. It's not that we don't have the curriculum. It's, we're working on finalizing the curriculum, particularly some of our electives, and then making sure that it's organized, it's in a consistent format. And it's in a format that everyone can easily read and understand and have access to, including families. So, the attention and my, the content coordinators are very, very, I won't say excited, I'm not sure what the word is, but they are motivated, I guess is a good word, to get this done by the end of the year. So, one of our initiatives at the end of the year during the half days is to make sure that we have this ready to go, ready for our website by the beginning of the year. And then I was here, I think it was in the fall, talking about the school improvement plan. Our school improvement plan is directly, it was directly tied, and it will continue to be directly tied to these initiatives. So, the first goal, as I said, is to design, integrate, assess the vision of the graduate, develop and implement engaging curriculum, high-quality instruction, authentic assessment, and then size this career, college, and post-secondary life readiness. Again, these are all the standards that it's tied to. And not only are we tying it to MEAS, but we're also tying it to the district goals. Evaluating and connecting graduation credits and schedule to the vision of the graduate, career, college, post-secondary life readiness. The next thing that you're gonna hear me talk a whole lot about next year is we would like to really focus on our graduation requirements and what we move forward. We expect students to, you know, utilize it as graduation requirements. And things may change. We have to kind of take everything and really look at where we're going. And I know that we were all supposed to meet in January. I think it snowed on our retreat day, but that's something that I hope we can all kind of work together and work on a couple of months. Increase opportunities and awareness for students, teachers, family, and community partnerships. And this is something that we strive to do in our classrooms and as a school. And that's who we are.
I commend you for not giving your teachers the schedule in their hands. That's very brave. Because the faith you have in the teachers is excellent, because I don't, I don't think that's necessarily how we practice. That's bad.
And also, while I have the floor, I just want to, and you should not hear anymore, but I really, really, really want to commend Sophia Pacini again, because, you know, the years I've been principal, even before I was principal, I was kind of charged with being the person that always had to set up the student rep for your school committee meetings. This is the first year in my time working with the students that I've never had to talk to Sophia. She did all that on her own. Let me give a little secret. Prior to Sophia, there was a lot of help along the way. Oh, my gosh, it's the day of the school committee meeting. And Mr. Suton would call me and say, are they ready? And then I would call them, and we would work together. They are all great kids, but Sophia has like, everything that you've seen this year from Sophia is totally been a hundred percent her. And, gosh, boy, she should have a class next year. This is so impressive by her, so, it's not here anymore. Shout out. Thank you.
Thank you.
We hear the phone, we know what I'm sure. Olivia promised it two weeks ago.
Moving on. Okay. I think next, under new business, we have some more citations. We've already delivered that one, a well-deserved one for Sophia Pacini. So, next up, we have a citation for Jennifer Vincent, a former Berkeley student. Okay. At a meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee on May twenty. On May, on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, a citation was prepared, signed by members of the committee and voted in for a citation. Whereas Jennifer Vincent served as a Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee member for the past two years. She was a valued member of the policy tri-district superintendent's goal in grants partnership subcommittee and regional training board. She also provided Berkeley Public Schools updates to the committee. And whereas Jennifer faithfully and conscientiously performed her duties on behalf of the students and staff of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District, an individual with integrity and high standards who always asked thoughtful questions and shared practical and student-driven solutions based on her experience in college admissions. And whereas she fulfilled these responsibilities with the utmost attention to detail and a steadfast commitment to excellence, earning the respect of colleagues, staff, parents, and students. And be it hereby resolved that the members of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee commend Jennifer Vincent in the official minutes, recording this expression of appreciation and gratitude to an honored member of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee, and extending best wishes and best wishes on all her future endeavors. So, I'll entertain a motion to present this citation.
Second.
Motion in the second.
Dissection.
Favor.
Aye.
Well, maybe, since you're a Berkeley person, you can deliver that. Okay. Next up, we have a citation for Raymond O'Connell, who is retiring. At a meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, a citation was prepared, signed by members of the committee, and voted in for a permanent record citation. Whereas Raymond Curtis O'Connell served as a custodian for the Somerset Public Schools and Somerset Berkeley Regional School District for the past twenty-eight years. And whereas a loyal and dedicated employee, Curtis faithfully and conscientiously performed his duties on behalf of the students and staff of the Somerset Public Schools and Somerset Berkeley Regional School District, an individual with integrity and high standards. Whereas he fulfilled his duties with the utmost attention to detail and an uncompromising commitment to excellence, always maintaining the highest standards. Be it hereby resolved that the members of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee commend Raymond O'Connell in the official minutes, recording this expression of appreciation and gratitude to an honored professional of Somerset Berkeley Regional School District, and extending best wishes in his retirement years.
Make a motion to adopt this citation. Second.
Motion in the second and move to discussion. None, all those in favor? You're not starting off slow, are you? They're all wonderful, but.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just got a table. You're doing so well.
Okay. Next, we have a citation for Laura Cabral, who is retiring cafeteria worker. At a meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, a citation was prepared, signed by members of the committee, and voted in for a permanent record citation. Whereas Laura Cabral served as a cafeteria worker for the Somerset Public Schools and Somerset Berkeley Regional School District for the past twenty-four years. Retiring on the exact same date as her husband. And whereas Laura was a model team member and the epitome of reliable and hard work. An epitome of reliable, hard work. She was instrumental in bridging the transition of managers and was integral in the training of new staff members. She leaves the high school a better place than when she started. And whereas she fulfilled her assignments with the utmost attention to detail and an uncompromising commitment to excellence, earning the respect of colleagues, students, and staff, while always maintaining the highest standards of youth service. And be it hereby resolved that the members of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School commend Laura Cabral in the official minutes, recording this expression of appreciation and gratitude to an honored professional, and extending best wishes in her retirement years as she spends more time with her grandchildren and new puppy.
Yes. Make a motion to adopt this citation for Laura Cabral.
Motion in the second and move to discussion. None, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Go. Okay. And now we have a proclamation for Doug Chapman, for the Doug Chapman Tennis Sports. Whereas on April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee unanimously voted to name the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Tennis Sports in honor of Coach Douglas C. Chapman. And whereas Doug Chapman has been a member of the Somerset High School and Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Tennis Program for forty-eight years. First as a player, then as coach for the past forty-four years. And whereas he has earned numerous well-deserved athletes at the local, regional, and national level that has been illustrious for you. And whereas this season, Doug burned his sixth-hundredth career win as an SHS, S-B-R-H-S tennis coach, and his seventh as a high school college coach. Whereas his NOP policy has allowed hundreds of students to experience the joy, camaraderie, and life lessons that sports offer. He is a role model who encourages all of his players to try their best. Doug exemplifies the definition of Somerset Berkeley great. And be it hereby resolved that the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District community recognizes Douglas C. Chapman's remarkable achievements and extends immense appreciation and gratitude for his dedication and commitment to the student athletes of Somerset High School and Somerset Berkeley Regional High School. and extends immense appreciation and gratitude for his dedication and commitment to the student athletes of Somerset High School and Somerset Berkeley Regional High School.
Make a motion to adopt this proclamation with Douglas C. Chapman as coordinating. Second.
Motion in the second and move to discussion.
Madam Chair, I'm just gonna, I know many of you weren't able to attend the event. There's quite a few people in hopes of attending there. It was great to see some of his former students, but better yet, his current students actually there, uh, supporting the decision that we made. But the thing that, it was kind of rainy, but I think more, uh, liquid fell out of his eyes. He was extremely emotional. But one thing he said, which I feel and I probably could understand or do understand is that, though he has received many accolades throughout the local, state, regional, and nationally, the thing that probably meant the most was that he was having this honor in front of his parents. So I just wanted to share that with the whole.
Ray, you had asked her?
Yeah, Ray, I stopped by to figure it out before, before we were there. We still wait for the bus. It came by about two hours later.
So we think we have a motion in the second and discussion. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Next, the next item on the agenda in new business is student parking pass process review. You know, last meeting, yeah, last meeting. We had a presentation, uh, of some students who looked at the parking pass process as part of their city. Just whenever you have any, any thoughts on that.
Well, at, at the time, the students, if you recall, uh, presented a couple of, uh, they had two proposals. One was, uh, reducing the current fifty-dollar fee, uh, by ten dollars for each quarter that passes. Have some prorated aspect to it. So for a student who was only, uh, getting his real license midway through the year, the first two quarters have passed, then it would only be a thirty-dollar fee for the rest of the year. Yeah, there was two ten-dollar quarters that essentially passed. Uh, that was one, one, and then the other, um, that they had requested was, uh, to, for students to be assigned specific spaces in the park. That way they're, they're not coming in, they know that, uh, they don't have to arrive at seven o'clock to make sure they have a spot. Everyone would have a certain space. With that, obviously, it is the practice that we now have where there is, uh, we're only selling, uh, the number of passes that match the number of spots that we have, uh, a few years ago. So that prompt has been corrected, but, uh, it was really just the, the two things that they were proposing to.
Has there been any, um, consideration by administration from the back? Or it's really operational?
Yeah, it's, uh, talked with, uh, Russell about it, uh, she's supportive of this as well. And I think the one question that we, uh, that came up, we're about those few spots that, uh, we do tend to use for alarm store. We would just assign those, we know what few places those are. Those would be the very last passes that would be sold if we sell them at all. And hopefully, uh, those tend to go, last year, we tend to go out March or so. Hopefully, most of the winters behind us, we wouldn't have to encounter with any, uh, problem that a student happens to go into the parking, superpark lot and not have a space.
Would, would our students have needed to handle the markings of, like, actually numbering the?
We would, we would pay for, uh, it's probably about time that we have someone to repaint the lines again, right? So that would just be a process that they would be able to do first. One of the other things that we talked about is some students will have their cards together, race, going out their cards together, so they have to get their, their passes.
We would just need to show up in line together.
Yeah. The, the only other piece that I thought of what happened is, is, of course, we live exactly in that, they have issues that are most typical. Either you're fully a half year or you're just, that doesn't matter. This is, it, it's a very, uh, uh, we lost it because they, like, we changed, so we, we stream like, like, we can make this here.
Yeah, I just asked a question. It seems like a lot of students personally don't do this.
Right.
But they're selling tickets, of course, you're ready.
They aren't, they're paid for. So rather than just.
I'm really excited to work with each other. Right. Imagine the job of, of taking, so, passes, so, yeah, just.
Right, so that's two, who's, who's getting their license and their, uh, kind of a check for fifty dollars, what would be for it?
Are some of those also about buying passes? My daughter was mid-September, so she, COVID had, she would have had her license in September.
I don't, uh, I don't think that there is.
Cause I know when I called, they said that there weren't any passes, that they were thinking of selling, selling. I mean, it wasn't an issue with COVID, but I wasn't sure about something. If there's space, obviously.
Yeah, it's a good question. I'm not sure how they handle with, uh, the order of, but then it is seniors first and then juniors.
It is, I know the seniors get first, that, you know, they, I guess. But I don't know that it actually goes to self-owns.
My daughter's a junior, she dropped first, in fact, early in the month.
Yeah, so, so when is he going to?
I'd ask, I'd ask.
Yeah, but, uh, the only reason I'm asking is my daughter, it's September nineteenth, so she would have been sold on, she got her license in March for some of those. I mean, there's some slots, there's a lot of issue.
I have a comment or question, I have a, the whole conversation, presentation of all the students, I, um, I felt was fabulous. And it actually got me thinking a little bit more deeply about my old parking fee situation. And I'm just wondering, um, I mean, our, our current policy says that we may charge the, the, if we're looking at, I think at a minimum, I would be in favor of a sliding, a prorated scale based on, you know, season, and then if we're getting down to eight thousand dollars or whatever that would be if you sold them out. And now if you're gonna have to pay, have somebody pay numbers, it's not rare. Have last, I mean, I, I don't know the administration's feelings on this, but I'm wondering if we're getting to a point of diminishing returns, do we really need to charge a parking fee? Could we, would it be simpler and cleaner, and I don't know if the answer to this is yes or no, um, I defer to administration on that, but might it be simpler and cleaner to say, we provide, this is the size of the parking lot, it's a space, clean space for kids, it's first come, first served. You can't re-park and there's no charge for it. I don't, I'm just throwing that out there and I would, I'd wanna hear from the administration as to, rather than from a fin, strictly financial point of view. And I know Victor called me, the conservative one, when we were talking about budget, but if we're to eight thousand dollars in, we're gonna add an expense, and kind of more, or at least not less administrative hassle, you know, administration is still having to sell tickets and now it's a number and kids have to get in line together. Are we adding, are we making it more complicated than it needs to be for eight thousand dollars? And is there, is there a way that our budget, could we absorb that some other way? And philosophically to charging kids to park the facility that they're required to attend? Um, I know we provide costing and transportation, um, and that's, that's an option for students, but I don't know. I just, I'm wondering if this is frankly even more correct.
I, I agree with that, but my only concern is if you're not giving passes, you're still gonna have the kids showing up at six-thirty or seven to try to get a parking spot. So my suggestion would be, don't charge, that they still come to get a pass and a parking spot, so they're still assigned a spot. So you're not having kids fighting for parking spots and the seniors get seniority and that's part of being a senior, you can get, get first, lips, you know, just like everyone else needed before.
If I can just, if I can just, then, first, everyone knows how I feel about fees. So obviously, that's, you, you want me at the low. But the, uh, the piece, you know, one of the things that, uh, I was actually, was accused that fees started with, while I was around, obviously, I've been around for quite a few years. Speaking to one of, I believe his name was Mr. Pelletier, Officer Pelletier. The reason why plackets became and why we started charging, I don't know if this was during our time, was because the, uh, the recess officer wanted to make sure that those cars that were parked there actually didn't belong to students. So, and because the placket did cost money, the fee was ten dollars. And, but it wasn't a fee, it was a deposit. At the end of the year, they would receive the deposit back because we wanted the placket back, or we had to print new ones. So that is where the whole fee came about, uh, that it was more of a deposit. With that being said, it was a nightmare, uh, for the administration because they were collecting money and the money was actually going into a safe and then they were given that ten dollars back. So there was that nightmare. And so that to keep, but obviously, anytime I might hear fees, uh, there is a thing that kind of irks me. The second thing is I can still want the placket. Matter of fact, if we were to ever eliminate fees, I don't know, many of you were on the committee, but I was at town meeting advocating against the town receiving the parking spots behind the school to make it official student parking lot because I didn't feel like it was fair to ask the town, or like you, hey, can I use your parking lot, I mean, your driveway, and you say yes, but when your son came home from college, I charged you to use that parking lot. You know, your own driveway. So I was totally against it and though it was six to one vote in this, uh, body at town meeting, I got the support and it, it failed. So to me, it's more of a principle, like, I do believe we should charge for the placket just so we are, so our students are, um, only students are parking in that parking lot. So that is the first thing. Removing the fee, I just wanna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw out some crazy numbers. Point zero 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 four three percent is how much on our budget. That ten thousand dollars is that many zeros. So to me, in this time, you know, we just mentioned there are a lot of families struggling. Any money we can save for families, especially working students, and I, and I, you know, and my daughter lives less than a mile away. It's not an issue, but I'm thinking of my students that come from Berkeley. They don't have, they actually, my nieces sometimes sleep over my house because they don't have to get up at four o'clock in the morn, five o'clock in the morning to catch a bus. So if you have that opportunity to get a car, it's really not a, oh, we got a bus, it is a necessity to have a car when you're living in Berkeley. So to me, if you wanna, if, listen, I'll, it'll be the quickest second you ever heard, you know, to eliminate any type of fees. But, uh, I do agree with Mrs. Harer that we should still have the placket. And I would also assume that Resource Officer Robbins would also.
Stick a sticker?
A sticker or whatever, in case they need, but it'd be something that we would want on our jammers.
I know Diamond, my son loves Diamond, he got his sticker the first year that he had his car, and that was his sticker for the entire time he was there. So I don't know, that was something to see, are we making additional stickers? Here, you got another spot, you want a spot, but.
I wonder, can I, just, I wonder if, and I'm not to kick it down the road, but would it make sense to, you know, our next meeting is June twenty-first, which is around the start of the fiscal year, no, the end of the fiscal year. Would it make sense to just ask for at that meeting, like, a recommendation from administration in terms of safety, like checking with Officer Roberts? And, you know, address any safety concerns or sort of changes to the parking policy, um, maybe Mr. Tyler, I think we all know this, numbers aren't a lot, but give him an opportunity just to, you know, look at the numbers, if, if the administration felt that a sticker or a placard or something like that, you know, on the cost, but if we could get a number kind of around, if we were to waive all of these, what would the cost be, if we can have whatever system. I'm sorry, the parking fee, the parking.
Thank you.
Not on, sorry.
I thought I missed something.
The parking fee. I'm not gonna get into that. But if, maybe if we could just get a report back on what the administration, along with Officer Robbins, would recommend and what the impact of that would be financially. And then perhaps we could, if the committee, who they plan to get, discuss that again, maybe take a word on that.
I have had a conversation with Officer Robbins about this. He did share a few concerns. One is, uh, if we didn't have passes at all, then we could potentially be in a situation where four hundred kids come to school, looking for two hundred spots and then it causes that chaos that we had twenty years ago. Uh, and the other is when students do get a pass, they do sign an agreement because they are acknowledging, uh, the responsibility of having the power of influence. So if there was no pass and none of that, then, then it's not a concern.
They provide their registration information.
I believe so.
They get a lot of, from their registration.
Well, we can have to, uh, either he can come first or I can chair on, on behalf of the students.
We're gonna go around the window, then bring it back for June, because recommendations, we can just send that. Moving on. Item seven under new business is to consider dissolving the regional committee board.
I had a, Mr. Robbins on the, on the agenda, I think that is, you know, what we're, we're done by the regional board. I think that we, you know, what we've done by the regional board, as we're getting to the point now where we're signing committees, we're gonna approve, I thought might be a challenge, you know, we'll get basic this out as a, as a service purpose. You know, we could work a lot of new issues. And I think what came out of that is a lot of collaboration and a lot of evidence. Uh, and we can still do those things, but not necessarily, uh, we need to, so that was kind of my thought. I have a strong, I have a thought, but, uh, but to consider that and decide if you have to. And say our effects to all of the, just, you know.
I'll just add, I mean, I, I've been on three, so that was my third one. Um, I, from my understanding, those regional committee boards are, uh, been established at a time by the regional school district, this committee is a double board. Um, and more often, um, from what I understand, it is, they are established to look at a review of the district agreement or to make an amendment or to, you know, consider whether or not, like, change, regional, a formation of the regional district. Um, as Mr. Fensmaker said, we did, did an extensive review of that agreement. We got, um, some changes, particularly the, uh, the language related to the assessment formula. We weren't having meetings, and I know we did a short time. Uh, we did have a review, um, of, of potential collaborations. And I think that Mr. Fensmaker told me there really wasn't, although that was posted on the website, there really wasn't a chat or comments related to it, not questions. So I'm fine to do whatever the committee desires, but I think, you know, it served its purpose. So I'm fine with sending out a letter on the committee or to all members. So thank you very much. You know, the, the report's still available, and we will reach back out and we'll do it again. Yeah?
I, I agree, but I just, I wanna echo what both of them said. That committee did wonderful work and changed the assessment. That was huge for both, uh, you know, that was definitely changed some language. And just knowing the collaboration that is going, that we weren't even aware, you know, it was an opportunity to say kudos to our administrations, to say, this is great work, you guys. So, um, I, I just applaud that as well.
All right, so I'll enter the motion to dissolve the regional committee. All right, hearing none, I'll leave the paper.
Aye.
I oppose. Next item on the agenda, number eight, is the discussion on school committee stipends. Perhaps Mr. Machado asked that this be included?
Yeah, um, I, I've asked this a few times now. Um, and when I say a few times, I don't believe according to things, multiple times throughout the year, but every year I always do bring it up. Um, you know, and I'm just gonna echo what Mr. Pierce says. It is true that the school committee members, uh, in public, uh, on the K eight side, the pre-K eight side, we received thirty-four hundred and fifty dollars, um, to be on the school committee. Um, it's something that has been standing for a very long time. Um, no committee member has ever asked it to be bumped, even though some stipends may have gone up in other committees, but we never once asked. I have asked at town meeting once or twice to dissolve, uh, but after the second time, then the town meeting said, no, we want to keep the stipends, I gave it up. But, um, as a school committee member in Somerset, um, and this may terrify some future candidates. Um, last, in the last year, uh, I've attended twenty-two meetings for the Somerset K eight. Uh, and prior to those meetings, I had to review three hundred and sixty-one documents prior to the meeting. Um, I've reviewed over thirty-six hundred input voices. And Mr. Taral can probably, uh, agree with me, I actually do, and I do question some that I feel that is odd. And this one I could not separate because I only have one email address. And I've also received, uh, twenty-six hundred emails last year. Um, and now it's public record because I'm able to track it. That is the same exact work that my other fellow K eight members, uh, do. Um, having us come here, it, um, takes another fourteen, last year we had fourteen meetings. I had to review another two hundred and sixty documents. But the other piece that is probably the most, I think, we don't really appreciate, three members that have been appointed to this committee. The reason why the regional, when it was formed, they wanted three members is because we are the consistency of what's going on in the K eight and in the region along with the administration. It is unfair that I, as a K eight member, have to appoint one of my members to come in here. And as you can see, I've been doing it because I have a, I struggle, not that I have a child in high school, so I have a vested interest. But it's, we're finding it more and more difficult to find someone to serve on both committees. It's not easy, and I don't know how it is in Berkeley, but I can tell you, it's not easy. But the other thing is, um, four members receive fifteen hundred dollars, three do not. It actually is not correct when I say that. It's actually three members collect fifteen hundred dollars and two members collect seven fifty each because the Berkeley representative for multiple years actually splits their, uh, stipend with the counterpart of the K eight because that person doesn't believe it's fair, I'm assuming wouldn't believe it's fair. So I think it's time that we have to end that practice. Um, I can tell you right now, none of us do it for the fifteen hundred dollars, but it's more of a principle thing, we have to treat everyone equally. And we are getting extremely, uh, to the point where I can personally say, and I already spoke to Mr. Taral, I don't want the fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, no, like, accept the fifteen hundred dollars, but he's doing some tax obligation or something like that. Uh, but I cannot in good faith continue to appoint school committee members to K eight. And I have a hard time believing that we as a group would want, uh, members being treated differently when it comes to certain things. So that's my point. And, and actually, I've never asked for this, but this year I kinda actually wanna ask for a vote on, if it gets seconded, uh, that we actually have it on public records. Normally, I never ask for a vote. So this why, this time, I'm actually just going to do something that I've never done before is I'm gonna, I like to make a motion that all seven members, uh, receive an equal amount of stipends. Uh, and ask the, uh, business manager to either, A, can this current budget of, accept that, extra money? If not, officially happens next year. Because I don't want us to go to town for forty-five hundred dollars, but I do want moving forward that all members are treated differently. But if it, if it does, if this year can't absorb it, then it should happen. If not, uh, moving forward, but I do believe it needs to be put on record. So that's my motion.
So there's a motion for to, um, ensure that the school committee stipends are equal for all seven members of all these other committees.
I'm, I'm fine. Either way, it's just that it needs to publicly say. So next year during the budget committee, it's clearly saying that this is, it's all for all seven members, regardless if it's three dollars, one hundred dollars, whatever the least means to people. That's, I, I really, because I'm not gonna benefit from it, uh, I'm just mentioning. I, I just have a very difficult time, as I said. People, you know, just like when I was doing, you know, I heard that some, someone said that it might be an agreement, it's not on the agreement, because I know it's not on the agreement, because I would never support a agreement. Uh, but the second thing is, it's more of a, just a practice and fair.
Okay, so the motion is to, with, so you're talking, so you're talking to, twenty-four?
Twenty-four, twenty-three.
To? Twenty-four. Are we, are we gonna move into?
We're at twenty-two right now, finishing twenty-two, moving into the new year, just twenty-three.
But we've already approved that budget. So what Mr. Fensmaker was suggesting is that we made it to twenty-four. Is that right? I'm just, really, it doesn't, no skin on my part, but I'm just thinking that if we don't have to worry about finding funding within our current budget or whatever.
I would, I would say, let's go with the twenty-four. Uh, because, one, we have a budget and I would rather, the, what I was planning on doing with my stipend, Mr. Spunow probably, because I asked him this. I was planning on donating it to the first thirty students who pay for their parking passes, because I'm such against it. And because we may be deleting it anyways, that would wash what I'm doing. So I'm more than happy with twenty, twenty-four.
I think I am.
Okay.
Oh, okay. My other point is this, that the appointed members start from one year at a time. We have randomly appointed members. So if we're gonna change this, I think, I know that you have a budget done, talking about, so my item is six thousand dollars for school committee stipends. So we have two options, the way I see it. One option, take six thousand, divide it by seven, and set it by four. And the people who are getting zero will get eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And the people who are getting fifteen hundred dollars, they're gonna get eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And it's equal, and it has zero impact of the budget plan, so option. Option two is to give all seven members the fifteen hundred dollars and we need to come up with forty-five hundred dollars somewhere. And I don't think there's any appetite to go to a town meeting to ask for that school committee stipend. Um, I agree with Mr. Machado, it's not an issue of the money, nobody's here for the money. We look at the time, we're all hungry, um, you know? Um, so I don't think that's, but I do think it's a matter of equity. Everybody's time is equally valuable, everybody on this committee, whether they're appointed or elected, works very hard. Um, sorry, it's all subcommittees, we all know the work that goes into this. So I'm not, I, I don't, I'm all for making it equal. I don't care if the personal, I don't care if it's fifteen hundred dollars or eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and, oh, it makes sense. Um, and in that sense, I would probably refer to what maybe is easiest and most expedient. I don't know, I haven't asked you, but, um, I don't know what, you know, any other thoughts.
I would agree, uh, it should be fair. I think your first, to me anyway, your first option sounds a bit harder, maybe easier. I mean, I support it either way, but I certainly support taking away the budget's hats, way, but, so, it's, I think that's the, what is way to institute.
Is there any reason we can't do that, Mr. Harer?
I think, I think, the way being part of it, it's, I think, on a twenty million dollar budget, fully practical, it's, it's more of a table, it's a, like, major recommendation, we've now seen it, you know, like, you know, recognizing what, 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 what it does. I think it's an easy lift, it's a, that we feel we can try fully practical savings. Done a lot of repurchasing, you know, assuming a better cycle is possible, operationally, so just by two cents, Mr. Machado says, probably zero, 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 zero.
Zero, zero, three, two, whatever, whatever.
So it is whatever's decided to, you know, see how it goes.
All right, I think, so the motion on the floor is to, to, beginning with upcoming fiscal year, FY twenty-three, to make sure that the school committee stipends, all seven are divided equally. Motion second, right? Will be equal, I'm sorry, paid.
Thank you.
Yes.
As long, my motion, that was my motion, as long we don't have to go to town meeting, which I don't think, by Eric, Mr. Taral, we would be.
So there's a motion to be second. Do we need to specify, we come out?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. All right, so, motion second, and motion second. Let's hope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on, budget and financial matters. First item is the transfer of individual group funds from Friends of Music to revolving accounts.
Our treasurer, Brian Johnson, is here today. Depicts seats, though.
Yes, sorry. I don't know if you all got this. Does anybody need it, they don't want it? Just a little speech prepared, I'm answering the questions, you do. Um, so, good evening, my name is Brian Johnson, I am the treasurer of the Somerset Friends of Music. I'm here, uh, tonight, on behalf of the organization, to transfer funds from the Somerset Friends of Music to the school department. In total, the amount of funds is eleven thousand, thirty dollars and sixty-nine cents. This amount is comprised of ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-four cents from my show choir account to the school show choir revolving account, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-three cents from a marching arts account to the school marching arts revolving account, and twenty-four dollars and sixty-two cents from my drama account to the school drama revolving account. On the worksheet provided, I detail the beginning balances from the start of this school year. For each of the three accounts, I provide a small narrative that comprises that balance. Then I added, subtracted all the transactions that occurred within each account during the school year, which results in the ending balance of this being transferred. And just a little background, uh, the transfer of these funds, along with the activities alongside them, in short, are to bring the Somerset Friends of Music into compliance without bylaws and tax exempt laws, as well to have the music department in full control over their own funds. It's been my understanding that in the past, Somerset Friends of Music was the primary organization to collect payments from students involved in music development groups, which is the marching band or the show choir. And then process the payments out between, let's say, transportation, costumes, props, competition fees, and even the entire trip costs before we receive a Disney trip as well. It was about years, so years ago, I believe, uh, that the school department took control of many of those functions that Somerset Friends of Music was performing in regards to funds being collected and distributed. However, some of those activities, such as some fundraisers, uh, like, for example, the show choir or such or similar miscellaneous costs, still continued for the Somerset Friends of Music. When I became treasurer in twenty eighteen, I started to move some of those activities of the Friends of Music that were still performing over to the school department. This transfer of funds is the last remaining amount to give the music department full access and control of their funds that they deserve. Any activities that revolve around specific groups that would generate revenues or expenses for the music department will not completely appear with the music department. Somerset Friends of Music's mission is to support the entire music department from grades twelve, like, from grades K through twelve. And all of our fundraising efforts, collecting donations, and distribution of those funds should be devoted to that mission. As an example, this recently, we supported the transportation costs of bringing the SBRHS concert choir to Fenway to sing the National Anthem and Jerry Remy Day, an opportunity we were very excited to support. There's opportunities like that and many others that our organization wants to support and will continue to advocate for in the future. If they create time, we have to any, answer any questions that you can have.
I, I was here eight years ago. Um, I just wanna thank you for your work in, in making this transfer. I think you've done a great job, Ms. Treasurer, and I appreciate the, the detail and the reporting. Thank you.
My quick question, with the transfer of money, will the Friends of Music still, do you still have some funds for, okay?
Yes, yeah, so, yeah, so, um, the way that we've worked with, um, Jeremy and the administration is that, um, any fundraisers that, like, for example, the show choir, they're doing the candy fundraiser or the holiday show, that will originate with this, the school. And they would, all the funds will be there, any activities like that. Um, but in, like, for example, we just had our calendar fundraiser in April for the Somerset Friends of Music. That would still be with us, we, you know, collect all the funds and do that, and then we distribute that, whether, whatever purpose we want, scholarships or the transportation costs, you know, unable to be from the school and stuff like that. So we still have our own fundraisers that we're doing, raising donations for scholarships and all that.
I just wanted to make sure that if this organization wasn't dissolved, because I'm gonna say, this would be the biggest injustice to our music program because the Friends of Music, they have a huge role in a very successful music program. So that's why I just wanted to, that's the only indication I wanted.
Technically, this is not really Friends of Music money. It is just, it is the actual loose money that we just housing for, so we're just moving it into their.
Kind of given what, there was kind of like an agreement, if you all in US have, like, all right, we're holding money for them to use as they see fit, for cops and stuff like that. And so I felt, and, and, as we filed for, it's like, all right, you wanna have this money, so it's all with the school. It can always, so then Jeremy and the administration can say, all right, we have this amount of money, we can spend it on this, on the revolving account, whatever it is. So they have a complete picture from their standpoint of, here's all the money that we have, the funds that we can use for these groups and such. And the Friends of Music can be a supplement for whatever, you know, is not able to be done to the school, and we can fundraise for that, and we can raise donations for that, and, and stuff like that.
And I could just ask one more question. Your chair. Are we, uh, when our first act? Are there any stipends being paid? Because one of the things, when we were looking at the stipends for the union employees, are any stipends still being paid by the Friends of Music? Because that's something we wanna, I want, we were hoping to remove, so.
Right, yes, uh, so not anymore. Uh, the last one, I believe, was before the pandemic, it was, was around 2019. Um, and then some, there was a whole thing about that, and so we were resolved to not do that anymore. Um, so we have not, ever since then, um, we don't grant it.
But do we change, if that's implied?
Yeah, it was, yeah, we agreed that, yeah. We just, you know, we, we felt it wasn't a appropriate cost for us or to pay for those things that should be on the, the school, the possibility to.
And that's what we were, we did, okay. I just wanna make sure that there weren't any, that we weren't aware of.
Okay.
Perfect.
Questions? I'll just reiterate, everyone's thanks, it's a wonderful organization that supports our students, not just financially, which is obviously important, but just in terms of supporting the arts and so, thank you very much. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a group transfer of $11,030.69 from Friends of Music accounts to the revolving account. Show choir, $10,000.54, $7,512, for the marching. Arts, $24.50, ground.
Second.
The motion goes up in the committee discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're standing on the vote as I present the motion. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your.
Thank you. In past years, and. Okay, continuing on with budget and financial issues. Item two is the consideration for transferring additional excess and deficiency funds to the other post-employment trust fund.
Mr. Tarot, yes. I expected it to know. Yeah, so the, um, the reason why at this time, you know, just based on my forecast and community, we have a lot of variance within our FY23 operating budget. Um, I'll just remind you of a few of, uh, what is choice, so we see much as almost $100,000 in warrants, in chartering, uh, circuit breaker, again, an additional $100,000 because of the way we filed our, we call it extraordinary, we leave a little bit of additional money to stay for that. Regional bonus transportation, regional transportation dollars, we anticipate we're receiving more than 50% of the budget, as a budget project. Um, as a fact, the budget of the school choice was $300,000, we have a budget of $400,000. So $100,000 in costs, uh, circuit breaker, $100,000. Four, uh, regional bonus transportation, we have about $40,000 we haven't received that final year, because of bank tax, and that's the year now. Uh, and then the operating budget, this is a fact, this is our operating budget, is special transportation, staff support, and we have significant savings over the fourth November, that was, uh, meaning numbers to the top, going to transport the people who wasn't working for us, so we're going to do a lot of contracting services, which we anticipate happening. So our budget has a very critical requirement, $100,000. And then lastly, out of district tuition, so about $100,000 in costs. And that takes into consideration, plus we're paying, uh, two months' tuition last year. So as we get ahead of this, we have to continue that process as well. Those items are, I'm saying, about $50,000 for choice, about $40,000 for transportation. It's a total of $390,000 that we potentially need to transfer, transfer to the old pet fund. So if, if you don't transfer it, we have to figure out how we would not exceedingly exceed the deficiency fund. Um, for the new members, under the region, there is a 5% threshold, excessive deficiency is basically a misstep, a misstep of balance for the region. And it can't exceed 5% of the cream leadership operating budget. And we have to go through a calculation, uh, for everything. And if it exceeds that, we can take the committee, we can, this will be it, and we'll go back to the number of members. So it would be a good opportunity, based on what I've said, if you want to transfer money into the old pet fund, that it costs no impact on tax benefit, tax benefit or tax. We have an additional savings, additional revenue that we anticipate, so, um, it touches the, if you want to take some down. Well, because we've already made, Mr. Schoolmaster asked a question, how far below are we? I think we're above $60,000 below the threshold we hit after the last transfer. I think the transfer is like, uh, margin, so you'd recommend that. And I wonder if you could continually approve the dollar of not to exceed. Give me a little bit of flexibility, is, is close out, and the book, you pay all the books right now, trying to reconcile all the, you know, payrolls, all expenditures. If you gave me about not to exceed 330,000, I would make sure I stayed with that program. I'm not sure if it's going to be a problem with that.
That's a number, okay. I know we have a lot of ground to catch up on. I just wanna make sure, and I think that that, giving you that, you're right, moving by. My only concern is, you and the budget subcommittee have looked at other potential one-time expenses that those funds would be used for. I still think open is a priority, but just to make that clear.
Yeah, if I could speak about, as far as one-time expenditures, we would do it that way a lot, if this has to be, we'll, 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 we'll just, ahead of time, the next busy year. You know, we both have those things, but also maybe should utilize some of our federal funds. So the reason why we have some savings too is because I was trying to use our federal funds first, because I don't wanna lose those funds. So we're looking at, you know, there's corporate fund, there's master fund, we're utilizing all of those things, so. And we did some repurchases, we had some suggestions on, you know, my hydration stations. One, he said this worked perfect, this guy talked about some repurchases, a couple of hydration stations, but thinking ahead of what we could do. What I don't wanna do is part of your order, this recommendation, was, if you remember one of his, I'm gonna pull up a finding, a little finding, was he open purchase orders that were, so I don't wanna have that again. So that was May 23rd, and whatever we do, we have to make sure of order, and done, maybe we'll do it again. So I wanna kind of avoid that, so.
So what if that will help any capital improvements that might be, things have been kind of put off because they require additional funds, and I know we have a capital stabilization fund.
Yeah, you have the stabilization fund, I believe, I have a regulation, stabilization funds also capped at about 5% currently, so, um, we're gonna have to see if we can ensure projects are on the bill.
Absolutely.
And then I don't wanna put money into a capital stabilization fund, I'm pushing up the threshold there. I mean, because there's some of the things we always look at, okay, would, would, would our, you know, simple things, you know, would they be tractors, anything like the grass, or, you know, would our floor scrubs, would we replace this replacement? Easy, one-time purchases that last five to six years.
I think that, one of the things I was thinking, and I don't think that, you know, works, is remediation improves more of that.
I'd say, that's, I'd be honest with you, that is a big problem. I think that's something that the capital committee, because it's not figuring out how we can trust that. We did think about, because eventually, the track will have to be replaced. So if we can get the drainage issues, once and for all resolved, the basement's all clear, then we can focus on that, because it's a big problem to, and I know the guys that, you know, chasing after ourselves for services. Uh, tennis court was sealed, and perhaps, we talked about last year, we reported, we sealed, you know, the back, we sealed some of the grass, and tennis courts, we're looking at these sort of things, but we didn't. I mean, I appreciate the question, the questions.
It's a great chance to help that, that one spot. Mr. Shaw, is that the number again? Not more than three?
Not, like, to exceed 350,000.
All right, so how about I'll entertain a motion to transfer not more than 350,000 from the excess and deficiency we have to the old pet fund. Often, I was trying to challenge it, but that was, so.
Okay, so that's gonna be a transfer from the operating, I'm sorry, from the operating budget to the old pet fund.
Oh, right, so, okay, let me amend that, okay.
What's that, the structure?
It's not a, this is, oh. Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion to transfer from the operating budget, an amount not to exceed $350,000, given Mr. Shaw, who already put a term in that, not under that threshold, um, to the old pet fund.
Subvote.
Second. Motion, second. All right, uh, any other discussion?
I'd finish your motion, I'll finish your comments.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. So what we'll do is we debacked with the government committees, I noticed that this was approved, and it was, and I want to.
Okay, great. Okay, next up. Item 17,000, no, just kidding. Um, item three, under budget financial, the acceptance of donation of a 1989 Yamaha U3 upright piano, completed by James Mullen, which is valued at a cost of $1, uh, sorry, And here, I, I, I make motion that we accept the donation of the 89 Yamaha U3 upright piano, completed by our dear friend James Mullen, valued at $14,891.
Second.
The motion is second, discussion?
Check this super chat, it's got a lot of the status of, implying that we weren't asking this to you on the floor, you know. I will, I will thank you once, we have that.
Great, good. Uh, so a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Okay, and the next item is the acceptance of donation of a Bundy E-flat carnet SN from Susan Vieira, in memory of Brian Vieira, a retired music teacher. Here, I make the motion that the school committee accept the donation of a Bundy E-flat carnet SN from Susan Vieira, in memory of our esteemed retired music teacher, Brian Vieira.
Second.
The motion is second, and we, and it's a discussion. None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on, other matters, uh, information. So the first item is the status and schedule of this meeting ceremony for the tennis court week, which is. The tennis court?
The tennis court is, yeah. Tennis court, uh, we had that ceremony last week. Uh, we will be, right now, this, Mr. Francis and I, we need to extend our sincere thanks to him. Uh, it was a roundtable turnaround from the April 26th meeting, uh, to the ceremony last week, but he had a temporary sign created, which is a sign that would be gate into the tennis courts, that will ultimately be based by a more current, uh, endurable structure as of, like, the future. We're probably, we have that for next, uh, next season. For the track, we have had the, uh, the bronze plaque installed. I haven't seen it yet, but I informed that it recently was placed there in April 31st, uh, quite in terms of the ceremony, we have to establish. If, if, we actually, if we, I was actually installed the existing plaque on that, so we didn't have to purchase new one.
Well, they don't feel like shooting.
I have, since Schoolmaster has pay, I have, I have a chance to go over it, instead of the, on pay, I'm, I'm ready, so.
Um, so do we need, should we ask Mr. Francis, are we gonna have a ceremony to simply dedicate the track?
At some point, we will, yes.
Okay. Get back to some.
Yes.
Okay, the next item is school committee retreat. So in your cabinet, you did have, um, the draft agenda that we had established in your cabinet, in your, when we were going to get together, and before, um, the new members of the committee, it is a Saturday. But I will tell you, from my experience, the booths, um, workshops, retreats have been really worthwhile. During that time, we kind of lay out in a lot more detail what our moments, uh, what the objectives or the goals of the superintendent and the administration are, so we kind of figure out what, how we're going to work towards achieving those objectives. So I think it's valuable, and I hope that you'd be able to attend. My thought is that we could do a, a meeting hall and send it to everyone. Typically, this was, this is not where we usually have it, hence, it's, you know. Typically, we have it in the summer, so if, if you agree, we could send out a meeting hall, get some dates, potentially for the summer on a Saturday, and then we would also reach out. We had a facilitator, Mr. Tootie, that was fantastic, and kind of leading the discussion. Uh, he's a retired superintendent and former school commissioner, who's worked with a number of different districts, and really can kind of figure out the big issue for us, for us. So if it, if you agree, we proceed that way, that's enough. Because that will, that will help us work with the superintendent on what our school committee goals are being, what people. That's true. Okay, we work with Jason Ross, yes.
Perhaps, in the middle of summer.
Oh, all right, well, yeah, we'll, we'll.
We'll do it here.
We'll do it here, yeah, we'll, we'll figure something out, all right.
In the committee, heard from Dr. Russell earlier, it seemed, she referenced that as a proposal, coming in and having a session to about.
Yes.
What your goals, graduation requirements.
If we can have, um, the administration, it's a natural, it's all possible. Challenge that they're included on the poll. Yeah. The summer is a challenging time. Yes. I'll reach out to Robert, and figure out everybody. So the next item, I think it's really, that is, so school committee goals is the next item, and we're done with it. I think it was something that I, I. I would just suggest that, I think, we, I think we might have shared the document for the last set of goals, but we really do get to talk about that more in depth at the retreat. So I think it really would be nice to do that. All right, uh, so next item, the agenda is subcommittee assignments. So we organize, we need to, uh, here, we need to reassign subcommittee. Last year, I think we certainly sent out a Google form, um, and, just to indicate first choice, second choice, third choice, do that, right? Just to, did you have that?
There were, there was a, a, a whole view of description of what the committees do, which I'm, I'm very, I'm very sure.
That's the issue, yeah.
Yeah.
Whoever did that did a great job.
Uh, yeah, so I think it was more a queue up here, so we could take a little bit down.
so we could take a look at that. You know, a number of new people, so there are questions. Question about particular.
And the regional, will not be on that.
Although there is something called tri-district collaboration in the committee group set. But that was a small group, it was just.
Okay, all right, so we will circulate that. We have the descriptions of the questions.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So since on a vote, do you normally suggest that when our committees were there, we could be on the same committee on the region to kind of share, like, all of the policies from the state, do you suggest that policies, like, region? Would you suggest we steer to something that's a bit more experienced on different, on different instances?
It would be, it would sound for negotiations.
Well, just, no, negotiations, actually, better to have the foreheads et cetera, just, so a lot of times, sometimes it's actually better to have more opinions on the subcommittee, especially on the policy thing, because it's affecting both districts. The only thing is, when the chair receives, you know, everyone's poll, what the chair will do is make sure that the subcommittees don't form a, a quorum, an open meeting. Like, for instance, if you were to be, let's just say, the STA, and Shauna and I are already on the STA, by you being there, even though you're representing, you're not, we have a full board. So that would be something that would make sense.
Okay, all right. Next item, talk that's not anticipated by the chair. This chair, this is, you know. So you didn't already that we can end. It's not anticipated by the chair for the entire meeting. I don't have it. Great, okay. Next up, Somerset and Berkeley, pre-K update. Mention Somerset first?
I'll vote for that. I probably missed that, so you can fill in. So we had Ella, which is also a representative there last week. She told us about musical at middle school. They had a day of awesomeness. They also were very excited. They had raffles that they wanted to produce for. She talked about how it was a lot smaller when we go into T C. She had some of the most kids going, which I'm sure they had. So to do that, it's kind of there. Finals are next week and there is going to be. She did have some questions for us. She was asking if there was a limit to kids in classroom. Because I guess there have been some kids joining here. So some classes are larger than others. Oh, we had discussed maybe adding a, what was the board that asked? If they would be interested in including lecture rather than T C. So that would be, to add an added trip next year. So visit lecture center. And Berlin was a big discussion last night. We had a letter from a parent. Actually, Ella told us about some of the sentences on the bus. Then we, Shauna, our chair, says that maybe we could look into that. They had a college, they had ice, they had a sister. Teaching kids actively. What else?
A few other words.
All right, what else did I ask? We did have subcommittee.
Yep. One, obviously, thanks to all our taxpayers, we had a successful budget, both K and also the region, as you know. One of the things that we, the middle schools now posted or will be posting, posting is the middle school have the hot time VP where I am an additional role just to help with, obviously, bullying and other evaluations. Taking an assessment on our blessing. Where our ridership is really down. So we're really looking at that. And something that you will see very quickly right after the end of school, like, from the time you close to the time 4th of July, if weather permits, we're repaving all three schools. Elementary, the north, behind north, the basketball court. We might be replacing the rims as well. South school, we're replacing, we're repaving the playground area and some of the additional parking. And at Chase, the parking, the playground area and also the rear of the school. Yeah, that was it.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And we got Ella, I think is coming back. So she's going to give us a report.
Berkeley?
I don't know, our last meeting was very brief. Our, both of our participants weren't actually in attendance to provide us any updates as they're preparing for D C and graduation. We're very looking forward to the, I think, while we're there. Our A4 is going to do some stuff with Somerset, so that'd be really good to get that collaboration.
Yep.
I promise I'll have more next time.
You won't be criticized for not talking.
Okay, good.
Yeah, the Somerset and Berkeley students will be meeting up on the dinner cruise.
Yeah, the dinner cruise, yeah, like the last night, I think. So that'd be really nice to get them together.
Is that the first year? I don't remember.
Yeah, it's that first year.
You know how many students?
Are eight graders? It's probably a hundred. How many? Of course, there's not many that I like. There's a most of the.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Fabulous, all right. Thank you. So next up, action items for future meetings. I have basically scratched down, update on parking, recommendations on parking for administration. Maybe a, maybe a date for the track dedication. More info about that. Keep looking on the retreat and goals in this school committee. Anything I miss? Anything we need to do first? And then, I guess we'll, yes, we'll follow up on that. Thank you. Follow up on all. Anything else? Great. Next, I mean, gentlemen, we have the approval minutes from prior meetings. I would entertain a motion to accept the open and executive session minutes of April 26, 2022, as presented. I want to hear second, any decisions? Fabulous. All with a favor?
Aye.
Close. Great. And finally, please put that to them on the agenda. Anyone for public input?
Microphones.
Microphones, we discussed that in the last meeting.
Can you hear me now?
I have a, I have a much bigger mouth than.
I can hear you. You're safe.
It's not just him.
But, yeah, there's so many.
Matt, the chair, I just want to mention one thing, just so the administration can see how the music program's already, they're already thinking about next year. I just want to give kudos to Mr. Young, who reached out to me to ask the Winterfest committee, when they're going to be, because he's already trying to work around. He really wants to be present there as well. So kudos to him. And I believe this Souza and Mr. Young are already signed to the band.
No, we don't, I spoke on my desk. I agree with George. I think surely cross-table interaction, you hear each other clearly.
So we did purchase a system from the last school committee meeting, Mr. Young's assistance. So we do have a unit here, but I needed to know how to learn, how to use it. And I wasn't able to, in fact, with Mr. Young, he was not available today to show me. So it was effort made to have it set up for tonight so that we could utilize it. We're doing the same thing on the K E side. So we'll have the same thing. Hopefully, the audience will be able to hear that because it can be, sometimes we're talking. Right? Using our software.
Now, part of it is the system to, that plays.
You get it speeded up. Hey, Ron, you have to, that's a June 20. You have to June 20 to get it done. Our next meeting is June 20.
We have, we have it, so it's already tested, it's already used.
I was going to say, for those of you who were at Saturday's Walk the Walk, the awareness walk, the microphone and system pad, Officer Roberts helped set up. You learn how to use it. Is the system that you have. If you were there, it's not just a map you heard as well.
Okay, you will have it for the next meeting. Okay, and then, next we're going to move into executive session. So pursuant to Massachusetts general launch after 30A, section 21A2, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel, Lindsay Alverna's treasurer, and pursuant to Mass general launch after 30A, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares, litigation L H W LLC, marijuana hard brakes, asbestos contaminated material and solid waste removal, and go over Somerset High School. And the committee will not return to open session. You need a roll call vote?
Subvoed.
You got to. We have a motion and a second.
And the chancellor declares?
I, I.
She did, okay.
Just want to make sure, don't. Absolutely.
Who does it say?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And we need to do a roll call vote. So Mrs. Solomon. Mrs. O'Brien.
Hi.
Mr. Machado. Ms. Ramos, Cat Piarri.
Aye.
Ms. Barrera.
Aye.
Mr. Fesner Maker. When the chair votes, aye. All right, we will not be returning to open session. Thank you.